Good morning. We're going to call this meeting to order at 9:02. And this is the local district orientation for new board, for new member of Board of Trustees. I am going to be the super timekeeper today. Ms. Carrasco and I have talked, so for the staff, if I interrupt you, it's not to be impolite. It's because that we have three hours to get through the entire department of 50,000 students and 7,000-plus employees. Ms. Beals and myself and Jack, if you have any questions, feel free to answer them. You have an agenda here, and that's going to be what I stick to. So with that, Ms. Ivadra.
Well, good morning, everyone. And first of all, Dr. Leveridge, welcome once again. We're really excited to have you on, on the team. This morning, I just want to caution you, it's, it's going to be a lot of information all at once. You're going to be drinking from a fire hose, right? And so we apologize. I know that there's, you know, language in the, in the statute, that there are certain things that we have to cover during board orientation. So please know that you'll hear this from a 10,000-foot view one time today, but there's, there's a series of follow-ups that we can schedule to provide you more specific information. There's also an abundance of opportunities for you to attend training that will give you some more insights and more information about certain things. Feel free to ask questions. Feel free to make notes in terms of things that you want to dig in deeper to. We, we may not be able to do that today, but we can make one-on-one time or other opportunities will avail themselves so that you can adequately kind of understand the big divisions and the work that we do, you know, and the scope of the business of, of the school district. So I just, I apologize in advance because it's going to be a lot of information coming at you. But we are going to start this morning with Board Member roles and responsibilities. Our General Counsel, Ms. Sezzi Collins, is going to lead that discussion. And I think above all, when we think about the roles and responsibilities of, of the Board of Trustees and individual trustees, I think that's the, the, the area where it's critical and important for trustees to anchor themselves so that they can learn, you know, how do I navigate? How do I operate? You know, how do I lead from this particular seat? And so I'm going to hand it over to Sezzi.
Hi, good morning. It's a, it's a great pleasure to have you join the Board, Dr. Leveridge. It's great. Ms. Beals, thank you for being here this morning. As you may, when you think about the Board's role, you're thinking about like really there's, there's a sphere. And, and what I like to look at it as, you have an above-the-line and a below-the-line. And you have the Board above the line, and the Board authorities is the, the oversight of management. And then you have the below-the-line, which is the recommendations. It's the superintendent's authorities where there's recommendations in the management of the district. So the Board is above the line, and the superintendent is below the line.
And real quick, Dr. Leveridge, you have a binder that has all of the slides that the staff will be speaking to, and it's in order of presentation. So as Sezzi's talking, which the very first page, right after the Board Member roles and responsibilities, there should be a slide.
There you go.
There, that's what she's, there she is, right there.
So right there, and I put, I did put it up on the monitor now.
You got it with Beals for me? Yeah, okay, perfect.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind. So there you have the sphere. So that's what I was talking about, the Board authority above the line and the superintendent authority below the line. The superintendent is the management. You, as the Board, are the gov, are the governors. So at a CLEI I went to one year, I, the, the perfect analogy for me was, you know, the Board is the big picture. Let there be light. And the superintendent, her job is, I'll make that happen, right? So if you think about it in that way, you are, it, the big picture, and the superintendent is the one that's going to meet out the responsibilities and make sure that it happens. So the Board responsibilities, you, you could put them into typically five, boil them down. You want to ensure that there is the creation of a mission, a vision, and the goals for the district in a way to evaluate the district's success. Board's responsibility is to adopt policies that informs how the district's going to run. You, one of your major responsibilities is hire a superintendent and to evaluate the superintendent. And good news is, you've got a great superintendent already, so that part, you can put a check next to that. I will also say, if you go back to number one, the vision, the mission, and the goals, we'll go over that very briefly because I know somebody else will cover it, is those have been adopted by the Board. They've done a tremendous amount of work in, in the recent past in, in doing that. Another major responsibility, which you are going to get a lot of it from Ms. Martha, Martha Yerre here, is the annual budget adoption, major responsibility for the district. And it's to be consistent with the district's vision. And then another responsibility of the Board is to communicate that vision, mission, goals to the community. I like to think of Board members, and, and in many respects, you are a communication piece to the public. You don't speak necessarily all the time for the entire Board. Many times, you're speaking as an individual trustee. But when the Board takes action and the Board has adopted either a policy or a, a, a measure for the district, you're speaking about that to the public. You're communicating and being, and what I also like to call is cheerleader for the district. You are to communicate the success of the district, and that's what you're there for. So, but the superintendent's responsibilities, on the other hand, serves as, you know, the, the educational leader for the district. She's the chief executive officer. She implements the Board's student achievement goals. She manages the day-to-day responsibilities and operations. She recommends policies. So you will see policies that come. They're recommended by the superintendent for adoption by the Board. And then she prepares and recommends a budget. The budget is actually the superintendent's budget comes forward. And then she administers the adopted budget. You, you will go over policies in just a bit. Board members have a code of ethics. It's located in our BBF, Local Policy. It talks about equity and attitude, trustworthiness and stewardship, honor in conduct, integrity of character, and commitment to service. This Board, they found it very important when they were doing their Team of Eight to not only, you know, consistent with this policy that already existed, but then they adopted a social contract. And that social contract was adopted by the Board and is to be professional and respectful, commit to a culture of collaboration and a joyful team experience, value the perspective of each team member, serve the greater good for the families of El Paso Independent School District, and assume and uphold a positive and noble intent. And so that social contract was adopted by the Board. Doesn't mean that that social contract might not be massaged and changed when you go through your Team of Eight. Team of Eight being, all the Board members sit down with the superintendent, and they work together through certain things. Prime example, and one thing that'll be coming up, is the Board operating procedures that also helps the Board kind of guide itself and how it operates. So your vision, mission, and goals, like I said, you can check the box on this one so far. It might be massaged throughout time, but right now, you've got it. You've got a vision, which is inspire and empower learners to thrive. You have a mission. In partnership with our families and community, we will uphold the highest standards to provide inclusive and fair learning experiences that support the whole child. And then you have core beliefs, and there's five areas. And I'm not going to go through all of these because I think that the superintendent may be touched on in, in some of the other presentations. But the five areas, the whole child, opportunity, excellence, equity, community, and accountability. There's academic excellence, destination district, the culture of accountability, and equity by design. And again, the whole child, the five strategic levers. And each of those strategic levers has essential actions. And I won't go through all of these, but you can see, for instance, for the whole child, there's five strategic levers. For academic excellence, there's two strategic levers. Essential actions, I'm sorry. Yeah. And then for destination district, right now, there's four strategic, or essential actions. And then for the culture of accountability, there's also three essential actions. And then equity by design is two essential actions.
And so at this point, I just want to interject that this is really a work in progress. It was adopted in December of 2022. No, December of 2023. No, December of 2022. Yes, I'm sorry. I'm trying to get my ears correct. But so there may be some work that we need to do now that we've got an additional, or a new Team of Eight to add possibly. We're in the middle of an equity audit, so we may need to add some essential actions to the equity by design lever and, and just update some of these pieces. One of the reasons that we use the language that we did in terms of strategic levers and essential actions, the Texas Education Agency has what they call an effective schools framework. And the language that they use when they break down the effective schools framework and how, you know, a district should operate uses strategic levers because in their mind, if we pull these levers as an organization, they give us the greatest opportunity to propel the organization forward. And then what actions do we need to take as we pull these levers so that we make progress in each one of these areas? And so we mirrored the, the language of the Texas Education Agency as we developed our strategic blueprint so that we could be aligned with, with the way the state operates.
So again, going back to governance, your Board operating procedure is currently under construction. That's going to be one of the responsibilities of the Team of Eight coming up, to make sure that we get those revised. And then a major area for the Board is policies. And you will see policies that come forward mostly every month to the Board for adoption. The policies are, the district subscribes to the Texas Association of School Boards, TASB. And TASB has a policy service, and they basically provide this service, service to over 1,000 school districts throughout the state of Texas. They have a specific way in which they have them organized, and, and I'll go through that. But the policy is really the primary means by which the Board governs and oversees the district. The, there's two kinds of policies. There's legal policies and local policies. Legal policies, and, and you'll notice in our, our policy manual, are a compilation of the law. So it could be anything from the Texas Education Code. It could be case law. It could be attorney general opinions. It could be state Board of Education rules, a number of things. And they're all put in one place, and they're organized in a certain way. And then you have a local policy. The local policy is usually a way to implement the legal policy, right? And they, it's the way the district wants to run itself with a local policy. It's a response to the law. It's a response to the statutes. And so you have legal policies versus local policies. The Board does not adopt legal policies because that's a compilation of laws and rules. It's just put together for you. But the local policy is adopted by the Board. So I'll give you an example. In our policy manual, in policy BBE, it talks about in the legal policy from the Education Code that the district shall create a policy on visits to a district campus or facility by a member of the Board. So under the law, they're telling the Board what you need to do, right? And then the Board adopts a local policy of how to implement that and what that policy would be. Where we find our policy manuals, since you may not be familiar, is you go to the website, go to the Board dropdown, then you can go to the left-hand side, you'll see Policy Manual. And then there, the Policy Manual pop up. You click on that, and then there you will find all the policies, right? So there's six, seven different areas in which TASB has policies organized. There's basic, the A policies are basic district foundations. The B policies, you'll find local governance. You'll find things about the Board, the superintendent duties, planning and decision-making committees. The C policies cover business services. They're, you know, that's Ms. Yerre's area. So she lives in the C policies about revenue, budgets, accounting. Personnel, HR's got these policies dealing with compensation and benefits. Those are the Ds. E, instructions. So you'll hear a lot, you'll see the academics bringing forth the E policies. F is for students. Students are under the F policies. And then G is the community and governmental relations. When I first came to the district, this, this, this way of organizing the policies really didn't make sense to me until you get into it, and then it's very easy. You'll, you'll get really used to, you know, where, where to find the policies.
You can always search policies with just a key word, and it'll, it'll pull it up. So you, you don't have to think that you have to memorize like the letters that are associated with each policy or even know where it might be housed in one of these headings. If you just put a key word in there, typically it'll pull up any policies in any one of these areas that includes some of those keywords.
Exactly. When you're in that policy manual, there's a little box that's up at the top. It's just search, and you can type it up. So on the policy I was giving you as an example, you could type in visits, and it'll bring up that policy. It may bring up some others that have that word, but you, it, it narrows down your search. So your next responsibility is to, to hire and evaluate the superintendent. For the superintendent evaluation, there's, there's, there's two methods. You can use the, the TEA, the Commissioners' recommended appraisal process and performance. Or you can develop your own appraisal process, and the Board has done just that. So there's an appraisal instrument that they use, and I'll let the superintendent touch on that if you would like to.
Yes. In the second part of our presentation, we'll talk through the strategic blueprint and how the superintendent's evaluation is aligned to, you know, as the, as the Board set the vision, the mission, and the goals for the school district. Then we, I worked together with the Board to create as, an evaluation instrument that was aligned to that strategic blueprint. It's critical and important for us as an organization to have alignment from the boardroom to the classroom. And one way for us to do that is if these are the things that the, that the Board has deemed critical and important for me to focus on as a, as a, as a superintendent, then my evaluation should align with those things and what kind of progress we're making as an organization with that strategic blueprint. So that, that's in a nutshell how we formulated the appraisal instrument. But we'll go through it a little more specifically in the next presentation.
And then going back, your next responsibility is approving the budget. And then, of course, comes the great fun of adopting the tax rate. And then, then you can communicate your vision and success to the public. So what I want to turn your attention to is really kind of how the Board has to govern itself under the Open Meetings Act, and it'll be rather brief. But this QR code, if, you can bring that up if you'd like. It'll bring you up to the Open Meetings Act Handbook that's printed every year by the AG's office. Basically, under the Open Meetings Act, every regular, special, called meeting has to be open to the public. Everything, except when there's an exception in the law. But every meeting, just consider everything that you're going to do, every action that you're going to take is in the public. And the reason for that is, you know, as a country, we are a, a system of open government. And so all the action that you take, I mean, the public is entitled to know what our government is doing. Generally, the, we have to give advanced notice of the meetings. They have to be detailed enough so that the public has an idea what has going to be, what is going to be talked about, that what, what would be the, possibly, what, what would there be action on by the Board? And generally, you have to have a quorum. And so I, as, I like to say, well, I'll say, I think President Irabali stole my thunder a little bit about saying, he goes, if I, I'm not trying to be rude if I try to cut you off. What I am trying to do in a meeting is just to steer us back to the topic that we're posted for because we have to have adequate notice to the public. And so it's actually for your protection when, when I do those things, and the Board's protection that we stay on topic. We have to have a quorum for every meeting. The quorum is the, is a majority of the total membership. We're a seven-member Board. Our quorum is four. Vacancies mostly do not reduce the required number of a quorum, except for the fact that in your situation, well, your predecessor's situation, and in the law, there's something called a holdover doctrine. And there's been vacancies in EPISD's Board trustee positions before. And after those trustees resigned, they really, they hold over under the law. There's something that's called a holdover doctrine. Except for when you have somebody who takes an incompatible office, and then that holdover doctrine doesn't apply. So when we had vacancies before, we still had a seven-member Board, even though we might have only had six people sitting on the dais. When trustee Acevedo left, we became a six-member Board because that, that holdover doctrine didn't, didn't, yeah. Because the incompatible office, it, it didn't apply.
So real quick, just one, a couple of notes. The advanced notice of meetings is by law 72 hours prior to the, the time of the meeting. And then just so that you know, I mean, we do, I believe that El Paso ISD does a wonderful job of making sure that not only do we post the agenda and what we're going to be discussing in a Board meeting, but we provide backup documents that provide a level of detail to the public as well. And I think that we do a wonderful job of, of, with the backup documents to make sure that the public knows, you know, the, not, not necessarily just the topic, but the pieces that are important associated with that topic and what the Board's going to be considering.
And on that note, just so you know, under the law, you're not required to, to post the backup, right? You have to have notice that gives adequate notice. But it's one of the things that EPISD has consistently done for transparency purposes, to make sure that there's plenty of information in the backup for the public. If you were to look at other school districts, and even some of the very large school districts, the, the backup is not posted as, like EPISD does. So that, that is one way that EPISD has been very transparent with the public. So a meeting under the Texas Open Meetings Act is really defined in two ways. You have a quorum and either deliberation, which is where you're talking about public business or formal action to be taken, which could be a gathering. Or you could have a gathering, which is an opportunity provided by the Board, the governmental body for members to ask about, speak about, or even listen to information about related to public business. So sometimes when you have a quorum of, of Board members, and let's say it could be a topic that's somewhere else, and there's four, a quorum, at another meeting where it's something that would touch on district business, even listening to that as a quorum outside of a properly posted meeting can constitute a meeting. And so we have to be very careful about trustees' attendance at different events, but there are exceptions to that, to that rule. So what is not a meeting are social functions, regional, state, national conventions or workshops, ceremonial events, press conferences, forums, appearances, or debates to inform the electorate. Those things are not meetings, and that's under the Open Meetings Act, provided there's no formal action taken. And there's, any discussion of business is incidental to events, right? So you can't, it, it, no formal action can be taken, and any discussion is incidental at these exceptions. Otherwise, in, in general, when you have a four trustees together, you have a quorum, you're having a meeting, and if that's going to happen, you need to be posted. So voting under our policy, and this is under BE Local, at the Board meetings will be by voice vote or a show of hands as directed by the President. Any member may abstain. Abstentions, and I'll get to this, do not count as votes. All motions must be passed by a majority vote. Like I said, abstentions don't count as votes. It's, an effective vote is a majority of the votes present and voting. Ties do not, if you have a tie, a motion's going to fail. There are certain cases under the Texas Education Code that requires a majority of vote of the Board versus those present and voting. Meaning District of Innovation is one example. When we pass the District of Innovation, it's, it's a majority of the membership, not just those that may be present in a meeting.
Ms. Collins, you have four minutes remaining.
I'm close.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. So let's say, okay, we've got seven Board members. Our quorum is four. If we, if we had a present and voting, you still have, if you had somebody, let me, let me backtrack a little bit. Seven-member Board, we've got four. Our quorum is four. Let's say we have seven members on the Board. So in order to pass, you've got to have a majority, so that would be four votes. Your abstentions are not going to count. So let's say we only had a quorum of four in attendance, right? And one person wanted to abstain. So your present and voting is three, right? But in that case, your, your majority vote is going to be two. So it depends on how many people are voting, how, first of all, how many people are present, how many people are voting, actually voting, and if there's an abstention. an abstention, on how to count those. You can't, there are no proxies. You must be present to the vote, and the board president has the actual, the same rights to vote as any other trustee. We have public comment at our board meetings. The, you will hear people come, and they can talk about any topic at all, not posted. Any topic at all. But what you can't do is discuss those topics, right? There is to be no interchange with the public at that public comment. What you can do, and the board president can do, is give a brief factual information in response. You could reference a policy, or you could have a discussion that you want to have that topic brought back for the board for a properly posted meeting. But there is no interchange back and forth at public comment. One of the most important things when we're talking about quorums, there is something under the law that's called a walking quorum. And a walking quorum is where you have one communication among a series of communications outside of a properly posted meeting, where it's fewer than a quorum, but eventually there will be a quorum of the members in that communication. For it to be a violation of the law, you have to know it at the time, right, that it involved or would involve a quorum, and it would constitute a deliberation, and a deliberation is a discussion under the law. So I'll give this quick example, and this'll wrap it up for me, basically. The, there's a series of communications, remember, outside of a meeting, among the board members. Okay, so we have a seven-member board. Adam, Adam, Eve, and Kane and Abel are all board members in this, in this example. And Adam says to Eve, "Are you in favor of buying those new air-conditioned buses?" So we have something from one board member to another board member. It's about board business, right? So we're falling into that category. Eve says, "Well, if the vendor would add the window tinting", you know, she's indicating I might be in favor, right? So right now, you only have two board members talking. You're not getting anywhere. You don't know at this point if there's gonna be discussion with other board members, right? But then, let's throw this in. Adam says, "Well, Kane and Abel both told me, told me that they would go for it." Okay, so culpability here, Adam, right? Because he's the one that's saying, he knew. So the, the question was the intent. On the prior slide, it was knowingly, right? Did you know that it was gonna involve or would involve a quorum, right? So Adam knew, and he was trying to, to rope in Eve. And so then if Eve were to say, "Then I guess you can count me in too," well, then she's also in violation of the law, when really, in reality, she should've said, "Adam, you snake, you're not tricking me into a quorum deliberation." So, but the, but the bottom line is, you cannot discuss public business in a quorum outside of a properly posted meeting, called and posted meeting. And then there are certain exceptions about what has to be in, in open session. Attorney, there's closed session, and we have to specifically call out the areas of the government code in which we're going into closed session for. Attorney consultation, you'll hear President Irabali say, "We're gonna go into closed session" under 551.071 of the Texas Government Code. Same thing for real property, it's 072. There's, if you were talking about perspective gifts, personnel matters, employee, employee complaints, student discipline, personally identifiable information on some of the student grievances under a particular policy, FNG, they're heard in closed session because it's, it's, FERPA, personally identifiable information about a student. And then, when you're in closed session, you're deliberating. It's for deliberation only, but any action, again, is gonna come out here and be done on the dais. There's no straw, straw polls in the back. There's no saying how, you know, the, counting who's gonna vote which way or not, but you're gonna make that decision out here on the dais. And then finally, you have about twenty-five hours of first-year training to get through, that you need to have. There's a QR code for you there, so you can see the training that you have to do, and I gave you a list of the hours associated with some of those things.
And just so you know, Ms. Liz Carrasco, who's the, you know, supports the board, and, and me as a superintendent, is, is constantly providing you all with updates on where you are with your hours. She'll send you information about available trainings that might be convenient for you, whether they're online or in person. So she does a really good job of helping you keep up with those, with those training hours.
And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. This will take us to the Superintendent Evaluation and Strategic Blueprint. That's Ms. Macias. Ms. Macias, we have to make up four minutes, so I'm counting on you.
The presentation. All right, you could hear me. Oh, thank you so much. All righty, well, I'm here to share with you about our hopes and dreams realized, our pathway forward, and how you're gonna be part of this team of eight. And with that, in front of you, you have our, we, we're calling it hopes and dreams realized, but it's our strategic blueprint. And it includes, it includes all of the information that I'm gonna be going over. Ms. Fields, Mr. Irabali, you'll get the updated one. Only Mr. Leverage has the updated version, because we have one more metric to be approved in April. And that way, as soon as it's approved by the board, then we'll go to print and, and make it pretty. So just wanted to share with that, with you if you all come here.
Ms. Macias, could you introduce yourself and your title?
Oh, of course. Don't, doesn't everybody know who I am? No, I'm just kidding. My name is Mariva Macias. I'm the Chief Organizational Transformation Equity Officer. When I first started in 2022 alongside Ms. Ayveda, I would write the title on my hand so that I knew what my title was, but.
So all things strategy fall under Mariva's purview. She's got, you know, a data team. She's got a team that really monitors our progress with the strategic blueprint. She's been, she's led some of the boundary work that we've done, and we're about to initiate an equity audit, and so her team is leading that as well. So a lot of the strategy, you know, and the, the work that's pushed out based on our strategy comes from her department.
Thank you. Welcome. So I'm gonna be going over our 2022, our superintendent journey. As you know, Ms. Ayveda joined us in 2022, two and a half years in and wow. Our district is doing great things, setting up systems that are solid, and again, with a team of eight, continuing to move forward, as Ms. Ayveda mentioned, with our equity audit. What else do we want to put in place? With our strategic blueprint, everything revolves around it. You're gonna be hearing Ms. Aguita talk about our finances. We are, with our finances in place, everything is connected to that strategic blueprint. And that's one thing that I'm gonna be going over. Hopes and dreams, Ms. Ayveda will help me go through that, and team, you guys are welcome to share. It's when we went out and Ms. Ayveda truly got feedback from our community. It was very important for her to listen. What are your hopes and dreams that you want for your child, for El Paso ISD? What is it that we need to know? And she did that in a series, and I'm gonna share with you the timeline. As she started in January, in about April is when she went out to our community. She went out to each and every one of our feeder patterns and had those roundtable meetings with our community. Tell me what I need to know. With that information, she came back, and as a team of eight alongside our board members, started developing, what are we hearing? What are we seeing? What is it that our community wants to see in place? And as Ms. Ayveda worked with our team, her administrative team, she, she started looking at, these are some of our, like she mentioned, our levers. These are some of the levers that we have to put in place so that we could see action in everything that we do. She also was going out to community visits, campus visits, one thing that, that I applaud her. She's currently going out to every faculty meeting, wants to make sure that every single employee stakeholder has her ear and knows, and she's listening. I know that she shares on a weekly basis during your board communicate, what are the things that she's listening and hearing at those community meetings. Then we went back out in October, November, and we called it hopes and dreams 2.0. So let me share with you some of the things, and I'll come back to how many people visited, or how many people attended, but there were some key themes that were rising. And as those key themes were coming together, she was able to start alongside with our board, start identifying what those levers look like. And you've heard, and you'll hear them throughout our presentations, throughout your tenure here. You'll hear whole child development, academic excellence, destination district, culture of accountability, equity by design. I won't read all of these to you, but these are some of the themes that, it didn't matter what part of our district she was attending, she was hearing these consistent themes. And as she was coming back to the board, started categorizing them, and as I mentioned, went back out and said, "Okay, I believe this is our structure for our strategic blueprint. These are our five strategic levers that we have. What else are we missing?" And that was hopes and dreams 2.0. She went right back out and asked our constituents and our families, our, our stakeholders, what is it that we're missing? And these are some of the things that came up as far as themes that we were still missing within the initial blueprint that we shared with them. Physical health and disciplinary framework, that was one thing that came out in whole child. So that was something that was put into one of the key metrics. Let's make sure that we're measuring. If we don't have a measurement, let's create something that, how are we going to identify? How many students are actually participating in, in during, you know, physical activity and after-school? Academic excellence, student leadership and ownership, leaders in curriculum. Equity by design, specific needs of campus and students, eliminate barriers. So in gathering that information, again, coming back to the team of eight, that's when we actually started creating our mission, vision, core beliefs and values. My goodness, Ms. Ayveda, how many meetings were those that I remember we were here in this, in this exact venue with your team of eight, just going through everything?
I, I think it took us a good six to eight months to take what we were learning from the community through the hopes and dreams sessions, and then coming, we had a facilitator who was facilitating, okay, so if these are the themes that are coming up, then how do you put that into action? And so while the administration was working to put together the essential actions, the, the board was coming together to, to give me signals as a, as a, as a superintendent. Well, how, what will we accept as evidence in terms of how we want to see progress in these individual areas, which eventually evolved into the superintendent's evaluation? So while the, like I said, while the administration was working on the essential actions, I was getting good information from the board to, through team of eight training, on how we might measure that, what metrics we might look at, what was important for the board to monitor. And that eventually became the superintendent's evaluation, and gave us signals as a, like, here's what we normally would monitor, which aligns with the board's thinking, but here's some additional things that we don't typically monitor that are important for the board to see, right? So.
Thank you, Ms. Ayveda. And with that, that's how our strategic blueprint was developed. Again, with our strategic levers, our essential actions. And if you notice in your, in your book that I gave you, again, it's still in draft, if you go into page, I believe it's three, as this is falling over. Actually, it's starting on page seven, lucky number seven. If you look on page seven, we have, as we mentioned, our strategic, strategic levers, essential actions, and we actually get down to our key targets. And that was one thing that the board shared with Ms. Ayveda. We want to make sure that as we evaluate you, it's very quantitative, that it's not, okay, let me think if I, you know, depending on, you know, is a day sunny or how I'm feeling, what I want to provide you feedback on. I want you to know exactly what we're looking at, and we want to make sure that it's measurable and attainable. So with that, these are how the key targets came to play. And if you notice on page seven, on page seven, some of the key targets, at the end of the key targets, it said superintendent evaluation 1.5, superintendent evaluation 1.2. And for some key targets, it might not have superintendent evaluation. For example, key target 1.32, that means that possibly the next time that we come to you, which will be in about September of this year, this might be a key target that, as a board, you say, you know what, I want to start seeing what that looks like. However, know that all of these key targets, as we're giving updates to the board, all of them are usually represented at some point in time. However, evaluation-wise, only the ones that have superintendent eval are the ones that you're getting consistent update whenever you're doing a formative or a summative evaluation. So with that, I won't go through each of the levers and essential actions. Like I said, I know my team is gonna, depending on where they fall on each one of our purviews, you'll be hearing them throughout your tenure. The one thing I do want to share with you is the superintendent evaluation and how it works. So just in March, right before you got to us, and, and I gave you all copies, you all created, or you all provided Ms. Ayveda feedback during the formative evaluation, which was in March. The next formative evaluation that you all will be providing for Ms. Ayveda, giving her feedback, will be in June. And then the summative evaluation will be for the year, which will be in September. So those are the times that you're able to give Ms. Ayveda feedback, guidance, any adjustments that we might need to make, as she mentioned with the equity audit. And usually about August and September, as a team, Ms. Ayveda will bring you back some recommendations based on the data that we're looking at, based on some new items that might adjust her superintendent eval. So looking at the superintendent eval, you have two different documents that you all received. The first document is that quantitative piece. We already have measurements for each of these items. On the second document, we, as a board, you all shared with, shared with Ms. Ayveda, I want, this is something that we want measured. This is something that we want evaluated. And since it's the first time that we're doing it as a cabinet, we're actually developing those baselines. We're developing those systems to ensure that we're able to give you that data, and we could see what the progress is looking at, or looking like. So whenever we don't have the actual data, we're developing our systems, you'll have a different document that gives you an update, almost a qualitative timeline of what it, what is looking like, until it actually becomes numerical. So with that, as far as a superintendent document, if you notice, we have our key targets to the left. We have them numbered. That way, they're easily identified. They're all tied to the strategic blueprint. If you notice, I believe, it looks like the third column over, where it says percent 25. Let me go right here. I just, right in here. If you notice that first key target, 1.2, this is an example that I have. It says, part of it is worth 2.5 percentage points, the other is 2.5 percentage points. And what this is doing, again, since it's a qualitative measure, at the end of her summative evaluation, it'll actually give us a score of each one of our trustees, as far as the rating that you're gonna provide Ms. Ayveda. It's all added together, and then that is the feedback that Ms. Ayveda receives. So I'm just going over what the measurement looks like. So each one of the key targets has a percentage point attached to it. And if you notice, you have the red, the yellow, the green, and the blue columns. Those columns show to what extent did we meet that metric? So for example, if we're in the red area, that means that we were unsuccessful. We did not meet the metric, so therefore, there's a zero points or zero times the 2.5. That means there would be zero points allotted if that was the case. In the yellow metric, if we're in that area, then it's somewhat successful, which would be 0.5 of the total points. So 0.5 of 2.5, and then it mathematically gives a formula. The good thing, it's all electronically, so it's, you know, you, you'll enter your response, and then the computer does, does the math for us. If we're able to meet the target fully successful in the green area, that would be one full point times the 2.5, which would get 2.5 for that total metric. And then clearly superior, that's if, if we're going above and beyond, at that point, it's 1.5% or 1.5 times the points that are allotted. So that's how the calculation is given. Anytime that you have a formative assessment, what Ms. Ayveda does is she shares with you what the baseline, how was the baseline created, the year one. Then we'll provide an update. Then we'll provide an update. So for example, um, in March, when the board came together, they actually had some data to show as of March, where do we stand? When Ms. Ayvedra comes to you in June, she'll come back and she'll share with you the data. As of March, this is where we were, and as of June, this is where we were. And that way, you're giving her feedback all the way through. You know what, maybe there's something that you need to look at, or I've heard, or based on this information, you're right on point. So that's the opportunity that you're able to give Ms. Ayvedra that feedback.
I think also what it allows me to do as a superintendent is let you know, we're not seeing the progress that we'd like to see. And so I can, you know, tell you in advance that this metric is probably not a metric that we're going to be able to meet. But here are the adjustments that we're making so that in the future, we've, we've got a better trajectory and, and we will, um, be able to meet that. Or, um, sometimes I come back to the board and say, we framed this metric in a way that's very difficult for us to measure at this point. And so I'm asking the board to consider how we might adjust the metric so that we can still, um, you know, reach the outcome and share with you in a quantitative way what we're doing. But it's, it's not, um, by measuring this, it's not going to get us here, right? Um, and so tho- those are the, that's the value of the formative, rather than just uh, having a, a conversation about where we are one time during the year.
And I'll give you a good example. This was, uh, extracurriculars. There's, there's one, one thing in here that says increase the number of students that participate in extracurricular activities. And the way that we were tracking it originally was just number of students enrolled in extracurriculars. So when we've had a formative, we had the conversation of what that unique number of students that are enrolled in extracurriculars. Cause what we were seeing was a really high number, but, uh, we have so many kids on this board, we know that some of our kids are enrolled or three or four of them. And so we made that modification to make it a more accurate statement to what the board's trying to track. And then give the superintendent enough time to track those data points and make sure that she's at where she wants to be as we get to the, the final, uh, evaluation.
Thank you, Mr. Ito Bali for sharing that. And that's the actual example that I provided. Initially, we were just looking at, like you said, the total number of students, and it might be one student that did ten different things. And so we wanted to make sure which are the students that are not participating. If we have ten students, how many of those are, are participating in multiple and how many are particip- participating in none? And what are some of the things I know that already thinking of what you are going to ask, what are we going to do to ensure that that child that doesn't participate? That we do provide opportunities for that. So that's the one that'll be coming to you all in April, and this is how we reworded it so that we could create and track both. So if you notice on the top one, we have not created that baseline yet. The team is working feverishly to gather that data, so that's why we put baseline data there. On the second part, we had already gathered that data because it was one of the metrics we had. So therefore, we split it up before it was worth five points, so now each area is worth two point five. So by the time that we are able to provide that formative or you've provide feedback for Ms. Ayvedra, we'll be able to have a little bit more information of where we stand. So this is one that'll be coming to you all in April for your approval. I did get feedback from one of our trustees. And, and we agree that would like to see instead of the levels increased from three to five percent, possibly that five percent. And right now with our data, I believe that, you know, we are on track because it is important to us that our students have multiple opportunities to participate. So that's something that we'll bring to you in April. And with that, just gave a, a couple of, you know, just written, um, areas that you could follow. I know that sometimes I go fast to go slow. But that way, if you, um, if you want to come back, all of the items that I shared with you are in a written format so that you could see exactly how that evaluation was, um, created, calculated. And that way, especially once you get to the formative, please let us know. I know Ms. Ayvedra is always willing to, to sit down and go through certain things. Um, but once you, once you get the summative evaluation, which will be in September, formative is more informal where you're giving that feedback. The summative, you'll actually do the computer program, which you'll give the final results, but that'll be in September. You will already see all the data, which will be from July through December, you know, what it looked like, and then from January through June. In September is when you'll give the complete evaluation based on what you've seen, um, to Ms. Ayvedra, and that'll be done electronically, which is the sum and the average of all of the, the feedback from all of the board members.
And then typically, we try in October or November to come back to the board with any adjustments that we feel like need to be made to the superintendent's evaluation as we, again, it's a work in progress. We evolve, and if we've gotten to a point in a metric where we have solid systems and we're seeing consistent, um, you know, attainment of that, perhaps we need to have a more aspirational, um, goal or a more aspirational metric that really moves us to the next level. So it's a, it's a work in progress and there's always an ability, um, year over year for the board to adjust the superintendent's evaluation.
Perfect. Any questions for me? And I'm, I'll give you back the gift of time, Mr. Ito Bali.
Feel free to ask, um, questions, cause I mean, this is a critical and important part of, of the work that we do together, um, the superintendent and the Board of Trustees. Um, so we'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Um, I would just openly like to discuss the equity audit. What's that process look like? What's the data collection, um, mechanisms that you're using, just to get an overview of it very quickly?
Yes, no, thank you for asking. We are in the infancy stage. Right now, we're actually creating our committees. So internally, we have, they, they would recommend for, we've been working on them on a weekly basis. We meet with the team. And they're actually starting to unfold what it looks like. So right now, their recommendation is that we create two committees. One internal, uh, working committee, which is within our district, so we're going to use, we call it a department strategic planning team, which is stakeholders from every single one of our departments within the district. They will be our working team for the district. And then they're requesting for us to create an external team, which is pretty much built of community members, organizations that are truly going to give us and champion the information as far as who should we, once we develop our, let me start over again. Once they help us develop our system of gathering information, which will be qualitative and quantitative, that team is going to see the information first and say, you know what, that's on point, that's something that I was interested in. Or you know what, what have you thought of this? So that steering committee for the community, uh, we just met with Ms. Ayvedra and our cabinet. What we're looking at is truly looking at some of those community stakeholders that we know are, um, champions of our district. Not truly champions of EPISD and, and always on board, but truly champions for students that want to make sure that we are looking at every single system in place. So that's where we are now. Once we get those systems, those committee in place, at that point, we'll start building what that quantitative and qualitative, um, data collection will be. One other thing that we're currently doing is they're already asking for some of our data pieces. For example, our enrollment, uh, we just did a demographic study, so we shared all that information with them. They wanted, they also are asking for our, um, demographics, student demographics, so we're giving them all the information. Uh, the next data set is discipline, so pretty much anything, I know fin- financial, that's something that's going to be going. All of those quantitative data pieces, they're pulling in and they're going to develop their analysis of that. So right now, we're in the two stages, the quantitative, they're pulling the data, and then the second part is we want to start going out to the community to gather information from students, faculty, staff, community, organizations, so that we truly see what systems are in place and what systems or inequities are, are there that we have to address. And then the next phase, after we do all of the quantitative and qualitative analysis, they're going to create recommendations. And that's where our planning team will come into place as far as what trainings do we have to put in place? Um, what potential, um, whenever we're doing our financial system, right now, you're going to be looking at our budget. What things do we have to do as far as, so that we're thinking of equity-based, um, funding at some point? So I don't know if that answers a little bit of your question. And we're learning every step of the way. This is the first time that my team and I work with an organization. And what I like is that we have the national level, um, correspondent, but we also have a state level, um, correspondent that will be coming here on site. So, um, right now, a lot of our meetings are via Zoom, but eventually they'll be coming to El Paso and, um, doing a lot of the work alongside us.
We will have, um, focus groups, um, and a, a big part of what the steering committee's work is going to be is, you know, as we formulate questions that might be in a survey that we sent out, or as they formulate questions, um, that they're going to bring a focus group together to, to discuss. The steering committee will say, well, I'm not sure if you frame the question in this way, the community's going to understand it. You know, or they'll make sure that it needs to be in more layman's terms. Or it needs, you need to make sure that everything that we do is translated so that, you know, people feel free to. And so the steering committee is not necessarily just, I mean, they're guiding in a way that allows us to be sensitive to the community, allows us to ask questions that, um, bring forth, um, kind of the issues. Uh, because at the end of the day, our customer is on the receiving end. And so we want to make sure that any conversations that are happening about equity, that we're getting the insight from the receiver of services as we deliver them, you know, as, as a school district, right? Um, it is an external entity, so, um, you know, we're working to try to make sure that it's open, it's transparent, and that we get good, solid information that we can work from. And then, you know, when we formulate a plan, a- again, I think we would go back and incorporate a little more specificity into our strategic blueprint. Um, possibly some metrics and some milestones that we want to reach as part of my superintendent's evaluation and more just a comprehensive equity response, uh, plan. Um, and so I think that the timeline for them to finish is when?
Um, it's actually going to be, uh, almost a full calendar year for them to actually get all the information, give us recommendations so that we could actually incorporate our corrective action plan. And then as far as the implementation, it's from anywhere from one to three years. So, so again, it's all in phases. With them, it is a year. But then as far as the implementation and correction, it'll take us anywhere from one to three.
So, uh, you know, um, if we launch in May, which I anticipate will launch in mid-May, then by May of, uh, a year from now, we'll have specific findings. However, I would say that along the way, there's probably going to be preliminary findings that, um, I will be able to share with the board and update the community on, rather than just waiting uh, uh, on the, at the tail end for the, you know, for the final findings, if you will.
And Ms. Ayvedra, you're exactly correct. The one thing that I've learned is that as we're doing this, what is so important is not just getting all the data, the quantitative, qualitative, it's truly teaching what equity is and truly what we're trying to do with our assessment. So as we're going out and gathering information, it's not just the gathering, but it's also the teaching of. So that steering committee, as Ms. Ayvedra shared, that's also very important because that way, we're ensuring that their voices are heard, but they're also helping us in, um, communicating the message of what we're trying to do. Um, they said that those are the most powerful equity audits or equity studies that they've seen. Is whenever it's in tandem, that it's not just gathering information and here's what we think, it's truly done collaboratively. And that whenever we get to the corrective action, that steering committee is also part of that. Is part of ensuring that we're, we're communicating and teaching everybody as we go every step of the way.
Thank you. That's very helpful. The, the work that you're doing is essential. Um, and I, I just want to go back to the, um, the equity by design definition. So are those the working definitions of what equity is, or is that something that is, um, multi-dimensional? You know, and formulated in terms of what the gold standard of how we define equity is? I just want to know what, uh, equity, uh, looks like and what that destination looks like. I think that's what is represented here in the turquoise, but just want to make sure.
And truly what I've learned is that equity is truly what we consider it. So I know that you, you gave accolades my way, but it's truly accolades for the team of eight. Th- this is what you all created. So with equity, as far as the definition, it might adjust. Once we go in and learning and creating our equity, you know, assessment. Uh, right now, this is like he's, like, uh, the team of eight, this was something that rose to their level. They, I, I still envision it here. There was charts, there was, there was, um, you know, different, different little, um, arrows of. So this is our summary of what your brains shared with us. So it might adjust once we start learning alongside our external entity and truly hearing our community, our internal stakeholders. Um, as you said, this is what we at this point feel, but Ms. Ayvedra said it is, that's the beauty of a strategic blueprint. It is a work in progress, based as, as we continue to learn and grow and adjust.
Think that when we think about the term equity by design, it's really, what, what do we need to, you know, when, when we go through this equity audit, what targeted work do we need to do? Rather than equity being a very ambiguous term, like what are the essential pieces that, of equity? Um, gap, what essential equity gaps do we have that are preventing students from, um, reaching success? At the end of the day, that's what it boils down to. And so whatever those equity gaps are, then what actions do we need to take to bridge those gaps? So by extension, we remove barriers and kids have a, you know, direct pathway to success. And so we know that there may be gaps in the way our policies written and the language that we use that create barriers unintentionally. You know, there may be practices with curriculum or resources that we align our curriculum with that don't honor, um, you know, um, the, the, the students that we serve or where students are not finding their lived experience in resources that we're using, right? So those are just small examples of, 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 you know, things that may come out in this audit that then we would be more intentional by design to say, okay, so when we're going through a proclamation and we're looking at, um, adopting resources, here's the list from T E A. Are there any other supplemental resources that we would consider so that we can bridge that gap? And students are interacting with resources that they see themselves in, not necessarily just those that are adopted by the state, which may have minimal, you know, opportunities for them, um, you know, to, to truly engage and interact and find relevance, um, there. Uh, that's just a kind of a, an example. I, I don't know where the equity audit will find, um, the particular gaps, but, um, we are very intentional. I, I want to say publicly that, um, prior to the work with the board, um, I know that it was critical and important for me as a superintendent coming in to this community to understand, um, what are, um, the equity gaps that may be present here um, so that we can move forward as a, as an organization. And it was, um, again, um, you know, a primary goal of the board for us to, um, entertain that. So, um, so we're excited about it. Um, we know that it's going to bring information that's going to be valuable to us. Um, but at the end of the day, we don't want it to just sit there. We want to create actions that are going to be meaningful and creating a direct path to success for our students.
Ten minutes? I'll take two more minutes unless, Valerie, you have. Um, in terms of reference points, what are some of the past studies that have been done on the EPISD? Let's say the past twenty, thirty years on equity, is this just genuinely a, a first pass audit? Is that a?
I would say to my knowledge, uh, Dr. Leveridge, um, and, and, and Ms., um, Collins might be able to, to give us more information. But to my knowledge, this is the first formal equity audit, to my knowledge, uh, that we're instituting as a, as an organization.
I would say that that's correct. Uh, there was in twenty T, I believe it was in twenty fourteen, there was a overall curriculum audit that included some equity pieces to it. But for the district as a whole, not just looking at curriculum, this is the first one.
To, to me, that's incredibly impressive, and it's important considering the standards that the P S D is seeking to meet nationally, perhaps even internationally. So I, a small question to that would be, uh, to what extent is this, uh, fact that it's, it's novel, it's first of its kind? It's so important, how is it being communicated? So is that going to be a centerpiece of the strategic communications plan for, um, for the process? Because I just think regardless of what it finds, uh, regardless of how it unfolds in practice, it's, it's just a critical thing to get everybody who's affected by it to understand what it is.
Well, and I think that there's going to be a natural place for us to open that conversation. Um, we're about to launch, uh, destination district redesign conversations. Um, and so as we think about, um, program expansion, as we think about, um, updating facilities, and as we think about, um, the prospect of rightsizing the district, these equity conversations are going to be critical and important. So alongside that conversation, communicating to the public that while we're having this conversation, running parallel to this is the fact that we're, we've launched an equity audit to inform our decision-making along the way. audit to inform our decision-making along the way. So.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it. And again, congratulations to everybody for this great work, it's pioneering, so thank you.
Well, and we're probably going to make a bunch of mistakes along the way, you know, but I'd rather make mistakes and, you know, trying to do the right thing than, than just be fearful of, or, you know, try to, trying to be perfect and then never launching, you know, anything, right? So in any event, good questions and thank you so much.
So we're going to take a five-minute break. Do we have to recess for that since it's recorded, or can I just call for a five-minute break?
I think calling for a five-minute break is a recess, so I think you've done it.
So then, yeah, we'll start back up at 10:15 with Ms. Aguita.
Because I'm sure you're going to have several questions about finances, so.
Awesome. All right, Ms. Aguirre, you are back on. You have forty-five minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, President Ito Bali, trustee Beals, and Dr. Lovridge. First of all, welcome. My name is Martha Aguirre, and I'm the chief financial officer. And let me see where my slides are. There we go. So in the presentation, I provided you an organizational chart of our business services division, and then a breakdown of the different departments that report to my division. So we've got the budget and external financial management office that basically allocates resources to the district's priorities. They're involved with all the different funding sources that the district receives, whether they're local or what we refer to as general operating funds, discretionary grants, federal entitlements, and bonds. The financial services department manages pretty much all the transactional business operations from payroll accounts payable, travel, and the general accounting. They are responsible. They are the primary contacts for our external audit that we manage annually, plus any random desk audits that either TEA or any other governmental entity requests of us throughout the year. We also have the food and nutrition services is one of the other departments within my organization. And obviously, they are the ones that provide the meals, breakfast, lunch, and supper to our students at all our campuses. I am happy to say and inform you that our district has, of seventy-five campuses, only nine campuses are not what we call CEP, community eligibility provision, which basically means students eat for free. They don't have to submit an application to qualify. So a large number of our schools are already being fed at no cost to the parents. The procurement and school resources department, obviously, they manage all the procuring processes for goods and services that our district provides. And then, in addition to that, they are also warehouse distributors and inventory of our archives. Our risk management department manages the insurance, the district insurance programs, our workers' compensation programs, and then our accident prevention plan. And then, lastly, our treasury services basically manages all our investments, our debt management, and any banking cash management processes that we have within our district. What I did to our presentation this morning is pretty much, I broke it into, what is your role and responsibility as you navigate the amazing role of a board member? But in addition to that, then I'll give you some district statistics and facts that impact our current district's financial standing. And so as a trustee, and Ms. Collins shared with you, Texas Education Code, Section forty-four, pretty much governs that fiscal management section of, talks about preparation, adoption of the district budget, the annual audits. There's also an evaluation that's done for all districts in Texas that's titled "The Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas." We refer to it as FIRST. Every October, we'll bring to you the official report for the district. And based on that, they give us a grade that determines our fiscal solvency and stability. And so this is measuring our external audit, our investments. I mean, there's just a lot of different things that go into this rating that they do as the state of Texas. And then, of course, the procurement guidelines, as I shared, we have policy CH or in the C-sections of our policies, there's a lot of procurement requirements that we must meet as a district, and a lot of our transactions are approved by the board as we go through the day-to-day operations of the district. It's also, I think, important to note that we, the state of Texas, has a biennium budget. And so we are in the first year of the biennium, the one that just closed. Of course, if you followed any of the legislative session, there was, I think, a total of four sessions with no resolution for school districts. So on this slide, I know I'm pressed for time. I have a lot of colleagues that have a lot of information to share, so I'm going to try to go as fast as possible. But I think that the nuts and bolts of this slide is just to inform you that we have our fiscal year starts July 1st. So in the next couple of weeks and over the next two months, you'll hear a lot about budget and officially adopt the budget in June. So when we talk about adopting the budget, the state requires that you adopt the general operating fund, the debt service fund, and the food and nutrition fund. You are provided with information related to other grants or entitlements, federal entitlements we receive, but you do not officially adopt the other funding sources that I just mentioned. And so we must adopt the budget before June 30th, prior to the July 1 start. The tax rate is adopted in August, which is a little interesting because it's after we adopt the budget. So there's a lot of evaluations and projections and historical trends that help us provide a balanced budget and our tax rate that is aligned to what our needs are. And throughout the year, you'll also see budget amendments. And so when you adopt the budget, you adopt it by fund and function. And I shared with you the little booklet I shared. The back has the different fund structures. So when you look at those funds, Fund 199, 240, and 599, and I'm not going to test you on it, but those are the things. Any transactions that cross funds or functions would require board approval. So this next slide provides you with what we call our budget development timelines. I will typically come to the board in September or early, or October, and provide, propose our budget development calendar for that following school year. And so as you can see, we start our budget planning in late September, early October for the following school year. There's a breakdown of a lot of activities. There's a lot of involvement within our district stakeholders as we have created a budget review committee that's comprised of the different roles within our district. So it's about a hundred, we invite about a hundred and ten employees. And on a monthly basis, I can count on about seventy to seventy-five participating in the training. It's a lot about exposing them to how is a district funded? What are the components of our funding sources? And then, we also start getting input as to what they believe are efficiencies that our district can absorb as we look at our adoption of the final budget.
So real quick, let me just provide some additional information, Ms. Beals and Dr. Lovridge. It's very important to me as a superintendent to stay connected to our internal stakeholders, especially as we're developing the budget. So the Budget Review Committee is something that we launched in 2022 so that we could get good feedback and good input on what is top of mind for employees in terms of what your perceptions are about how we develop the budget. So it was a great opportunity for us to truly educate a cross-section of the school district about the budget and how it's formulated, how we receive our revenue sources, what budgets we can use for what and what we can't. You know, when we, you know, if we have bond money, bond money can't be used for anything but updating facilities. And so if you believe that bond money can use to be providing you compensation, no, 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 we can't do that. And so it's really critical. It was a great opportunity for us. I think a year ago, we had them come and present to the board about what ahas they were able to experience as a result of being part of the Budget Review Committee. The second thing that I'd share with you is that I also meet with teachers on a monthly basis, the Teacher Advisory Committee, and they're the teachers of the year for every campus. And a standing agenda item when we begin the budget development process is also to share where we are with the budget and get feedback from them as teachers. Again, to educate them, to get their, you know, their feedback, and to make sure that they are represented in how we formulate and shape the budget that we bring to the board for your consideration.
So at the bottom, you can see that there's a budget workshop that's coming up on May 7th next week. And then we'll have one more session on June 4th, and then with a final adoption on June 18th. At the May workshop, we will have BRC members present to you their experience for this year's group. And then, in June, I'll have the Teacher Advisory Council come in and do their share of presentation. And it's really their point of view and their perception of what they learned as they went through this process with the team. So if we move on into some of the district facts about our district, this is a one-page that I think is also very important as a leader of our organization to be informed of and share with our constituents. We are the seventeenth-largest school district in the state of Texas. And that's when you consider that we've got over twelve-hundred school districts in the state of Texas. We are in the top twenty. So when we talk about the legislative session and the decisions that, or the discussions that are being held, you know, definitely through our association with the Texas Urban Council, our Texas School Alliance, and other organizations, we do have a lot of, we work and provide input to help us in the shaping of what are the priorities for education to the state of Texas. We employ over eight thousand employees, thirty-eight hundred of them are teachers. And we are the second-largest employer next to Fort Bliss. And so our annual operating budget for this current year is five hundred and forty-two million. I broke it down into the three large components of the makeup of this general fund. I'll give you a little more detail as the slides progress on what makes up the different sources. Our annual federal entitlements, these are what we refer to as our formula grants the state, the federal government allocates. There's a total of seven. We have Title I, that's basic improvement or enhancements to the basic instruction. There is one that's focused on recruitment and retention of principals and teachers. There is another entitlement for our bilingual population. And there's a fourth one that is, it's our newest entitlement. And that one pretty much is comprised of enhancing the whole child, focused on the whole child, mental, academic, and then well-being as well. And then, we also have an entitlement for our special education. And lastly, we also have one for our CTE programs, our career in technical education. So those are, based on our population, we receive those funds. They are federal funds, and you will see them in, by way of the allocations and purchases that we present. We do have an annual meeting that we'll have scheduled either in May or June. They'll give you a presentation of how we're allocating. We have, we develop what we call our district improvement plan and campus improvement plan, which is, in essence, our strategic blueprint. And we are required to document how we purchase and align to that blueprint when we use those funds.
So soundbite takeaways for each one of you. Again, we're the seventeenth-largest school district in the state. We're the largest and the oldest school district in El Paso. We are the largest civilian employer, is the way I like to say it. And, you know, we are the size of a Fortune 500 company. Our operating budget is over half a billion dollars. So those are the ways that I choose to frame that. So just soundbites for you all as you are out in the community and talking about our school districts.
Could be listed on the NASDAQ, I think.
So I did, I do have some budgetary challenges that I'm going to review with you all as we look and move forward. But the next slide, first of all, gives you a quick snapshot of our district, our demographics, our student employees, and then the number of high schools. And we do give you a comparative from last year to this year. Through our 2016 bonds, we did consolidate one, the last of the bond schools that we consolidated into a pre-K8, one elementary, one middle school, into one. So that's where we dropped to seventy-five schools. Hartley, correct. So this next slide gives you some of the challenges that the district, and I would say that a lot of these things are not solely challenges that our El Paso ISD is facing. Across the state and across the nation, we, the large urban school districts, you know, are facing a lot of these challenges. Student outcomes, obviously, you know, through the pandemic, and as we're now a few years out of that, we continue to have to focus and enhance our approach to make sure our students are engaged and successful. Our average daily attendance, that's the actual days the students attending school. Definitely, we had a large impact during the pandemic. And coming out of that has just not been as fruitful as we would have liked.
And I will just add one more note to that. I read an article in the New York Times recently that talked about attendance at schools across the nation is problematic because we've gone from a society of understanding the compulsory nature of attendance to school to now more attitude of attendance is optional. And so that is something that we're battling in the new landscape post-pandemic. So very interesting article. I would recommend that you all, you know, look it up. But it is, it was eye-opening for me in terms of how the attitude has shifted in families and how that's impacting school districts across the nation. We've gone from an average of fifteen percent chronic absences to twenty-six percent chronic absences across the nation. So that's a significant uptick in the percentage of students who are considered chronically absent in schools.
So enrollment has also been a big challenge for our district. Over the last ten years, we've averaged about a thousand students less year over year. And that's just a challenge that large urban school districts are facing, not only across the state, but the nation as well. When you look at the namesakes, Dallas ISD, Austin, San Antonio, Corpus, all those, we've all got the same challenges of losing enrollment year over year. I'll share a little bit of some of the factors that are impacting that in a couple of slides. State funding has definitely presented a challenge in this year. This biennium has been most especially troublesome in the fact that, you know, no additional funding is being streamed to public education. Employee compensation and healthcare programs, well, those are obviously because our employees are, you know, they are the ones that, our teachers, our campuses, the staff at the campuses are critical to the success of our district. We need to ensure that we continue to stay competitive. And in the light of lower enrollment, less funding, it's always presenting a challenge to us. And then, facilities, being the oldest school district in the area, a hundred and forty years of our school district, and an average facility being at least fifty years, obviously repairs and maintenance of that is also a challenge for us. So when we talk about enrollment trends, it's important to keep in mind that the demographer and a lot of the studies that we hear and see about are clearly stating that, you know, when you look at large urban school districts, the lower enrollment is attributed to, those are the aging population. So reality is that we have the older homes, the established neighborhoods in this area are pretty much comprised of older, no-child, school-aged children in those homes. And so that is one of our biggest challenges in this district. New housing, urban sprawl, which if you look at our city, where do we have the large construction and buildings? And our homes, our new homes are really being built out in far east El Paso. So that is not something that's happening here within our district. So our students, young families tend to gravitate to those newer homes. And then, the housing authority, so here locally in this area, we in this district had a lot of what we refer to, and if you're from El Paso, the federal housing projects. And so those were units of lots of family, comprised of many families. And so as they have started to provide housing vouchers or supports to where they get dollars that they can allocate to renting a house anywhere in the city, now these complexes are not as full of families. So that's also impacted our region, our district here. And then our immigration, our changing climate and immigration. We have a lot of kids that come from across the border. And so when there's certain things, or, you know, there's things going on at the border, it obviously impacts our attendance and our enrollment here in the district.
One thing that I would share, another soundbite. The single greatest impact that we have on our enrollment right now is low birth rates. So we're looking at, over the next ten years, and I think Martha will go into that a little bit more specifically, we're looking at leveling out in ten years from now at about thirty-six to forty-two thousand students. There are just, and this is a national issue, not necessarily just an El Paso ISD issue, but low birth rates are significantly impacting public schools. There's fewer children to draw from in terms of enrollment than the number of students that were graduating. So we're graduating much larger groups of students than those that are coming into the system. And so when we hired our demographer, that was, you know, they attributed the loss of enrollment more than anything else to low birth rates. And so I know that the public assumes that it's charter schools. It's because, you know, people are just leaving, you know, El Paso ISD. But it's really more, it has more to do with birth rates than anything else.
So this next slide gives you an overview of our enrollment over the last five years and then current year. Actually, it's a total of six years presented here. So you'll see that the gray bar is the enrollment in our school district. And then the white, the numbers mid, at the mid-level of the graph in white are our actual ADA. So when we budget or when we allocate our funds, we're considering every student that we're anticipating to enroll in our school district. However, we receive state revenue based on the number, the middle number that's our ADA. And so as you can see, there's a good, a great disparity in the ADA versus the enrollment. And so we've got to make sure that our kids are in school to help us provide the resources that they need. So this next slide is giving you a district comparison. So we're using, when we look at comparisons, we always compare the three large regional school districts, El Paso, Isleta, and Socorro. So what you have here is, we gave you four different comparisons of the campuses. So right now, EPISD has seventy-six campuses, Isleta fifty-two, and Socorro forty-nine. Our enrollment is at fifty thousand, Isleta is at thirty-seven thousand, and Socorro is at forty-seven. So what you can see there, that's very, well, it stood out to us was that Socorro, with three thousand students less than we, have at least twenty-six campuses less than we do. Average students per campus, right now, regardless of whether it's a high school, elementary, or middle school, average enrollment is six hundred and fifty-eight students.
Per facility.
Per facility, when you compare to Isleta at seven hundred and eleven and Socorro at nine fifty-seven. And then, full-time employees, we've got seventy-nine hundred full-time employees, and Isleta seventy-three, and Socorro fifty-seven hundred. And again, more facilities means more employees because every school, regardless of the size, right now, is being staffed with a principal and all the support staff that they need. This next slide that you have is our general fund revenue. And this is an estimate because the dollars are not finalized till June when we present six weeks, the six, six weeks of attendance for our students and all the participation in the special programs. So you can see here that our state is our largest source of revenue, three hundred and twenty-four million. And our property taxes are a hundred and ninety-nine million. And then nineteen million are federal funds, and I'll give you the breakdown of what that looks like. So when you look at the state funding, they look, the state calculates our dollars based on average daily attendance. We get an allotment for transportation, new instructional facilities allotment, and then we do have what we refer to as special programs. So the state gives us a higher weight per ADA if a student is participating in CTE, bilingual, is a SPED student, a GT student, an at-risk student. State compensatory education is focused on our at-risk population. And they've determined thirteen criteria that will label a student as an at-risk student. And so these are students that are at risk of dropping out of high school, or school in general. And so that's a funding source related to that. And then, when you look at the local funds, the local funds are made up primarily of property taxes, investment earnings, gated admission fees to athletic or extracurricular activities, and then other tuition fees is another big one. And this year, we are moving into more of tuition collection as we've opened up programs or are in the plan of opening extended-day programs that I'm sure you'll hear about. And then, we have three-year pre-K programs for non-eligible students that can attend a half-day at a tuition cost.
Actually, attend a full day at a half-day tuition cost.
Correct, yes, sorry. And then, federal allocations from here, the federal government gives us funding for school health. We refer to it as SHARs, School Health and Related Services. And that's services that, personal care services that are given to our special ed students that otherwise Medicaid would fund a portion of that. ImpactAid, so as you may be aware, any federal entity, Fort Bliss, and any federal, I'm trying to think, Borderland, what, I'm trying to think of that. Homeland Security and other federal entity facility does not contribute to our property taxes. And so ImpactAid was the, sort of, the federal government's approach to funding some of that. I can share with you, it's not nearly at the level that it should be. And it's pretty much based on apparent reports that they work for a federal entity that triggers that funding to us. If they don't report it, if they don't fill out the forms that we have in place, then we don't get those dollars associated with them.
And kudos to this team. We've actually seen an increase in the impact funding for the last three, for at least, I've been on this board, so the last three years, they've actually seen significant growth in the amount, because it's a survey you have to return. And so I know there's been a big push with campus administration, Ms. Aguirre and the team. So they've been a really good thing.
We also receive funding for, they refer to it as E-rate. And this is technology expenses that the district makes related to telephone service or anything related to electronic technology communications. The federal government does reimburse us at a seventy-five percent rate there. And then indirect cost rates. So every federal grant or discretionary grant we receive, the administration of those dollars, we get a percentage of that as an indirect cost rate for a general fund. This next slide is a ten-year estimated loss of revenue based on our lower, our enrollment trajectory over the last couple of years. So in general, eighty-one point five million dollars in revenue has been lost year over year as we move forward.
Right, 2015 to 2024.
Yes. This next slide is a slide that will give you an idea of, like, what every percentage of increase in our attendance rate, ratio, will generate in revenue. So in essence, three million, for every percentage increase in our ratio, our ADA ratio that is gained, we gain three million dollars. I like to say it that way instead of saying we lose it. So that's why ADA is so critical because the ADA, we take that ADA in our enrollment and then calculate a ratio that will generally helps us forecast what our revenue will be. This next slide is, when we discuss tax rates, the board will adopt a maintenance and operation tax rate and our interest in sinking tax rate. And so we did a, just a side-by-side of what is the, what can we do with our MNO? As Messiah Vedra mentioned earlier, and often I read it on social media and different, you know, commentary that, you know, they have all these, you know, bond funds. And I recall when we passed the six hundred and sixty-six million dollar bond, well, why don't they give the raises with that? Well, because you cannot. You know, there's certain purposes for every funding source. So when we look at personnel costs or just general operating, So when we look at personnel costs or just general operating, MNO is what we refer to as the funds that we use that. And we did a side-by-side, what would a school use it for versus what would a citizen use this budget? And then on the debt service side, our interest and sinking, the purpose and sole use of that is to pay off our debt for any of our new construction or capital investments that are voter-approved. So just what I shared earlier, so we cannot transfer money from our interest and sinking fund into the maintenance and operation. They are both two separate funds, and we do not co-mingle either one of those funds. So this is a very basic explanation of our tax rate. So this is our maintenance and operation, and I'll share that the Texas Education Agency calculates what our tax rate will be. And they basically measure how much of our local property taxes will be received, and whatever offset is needed, they determine in a tax. And we've been calling it our, we've had a tax compression over the last five years at least, to where at one point we were at $1.17 and we're currently at 82 cents. And so this year, they enacted, one of the things that did pass through our legislative session, was the $100,000 homestead exemption for our community. And so what you see here is an example of what that impact is in less revenue to the district. So you have your little house, obviously, that's the value of your home. Average market value for EPISD boundaries is 195,588 is the average value for our home. And so in last year, we had a $40,000 exemption. This year, we have a $100,000 exemption. You divide that per $100 valuation, you multiply it by the tax rate, which at this point is at .8263, and that's the amount of revenue per household that comes back to the district. When you look at the tax rate for INS, the tax rate for the INS is based on our debt payment for that particular fiscal year. So our debt payment for this current year is 57.1 million. And when you look at our tax rate for this year, it's .3108. And if you take the same formula, you can see that we're paying, every community or every homeowner pays approximately 297, or the average homeowner pays that into our properties. This one gives you historical adopted tax rates, and if you look at 2018, 2019, that's when the board approved, I'm sorry, the voters approved a tax, a penny swap. So we reduced our INS, and the voters approved us to get to $1.17 tax for MNO. And through the 2019, 2020 legislative year, tax compression was enacted, and you can see that year over year, our tax allocation, our MNO rate has gone down significantly. You can see under the INS rate, so in 2016, we passed the bond, but we did not sell all $666 million at one time. We did it in three tranches. So you can see as the years progressed, the INS rate increased, but that's because we sold the bonds and construction projects started. So you can see that we're at 3108, and that is where we are now, where all bonds have been sold. So in total, we pay our community, our tax rate is at $1.13 for this current year. It's also important to note that there are other entities that generate revenue from property taxes. And so you've got the city of El Paso at 36.8%, El Paso ISD at 26.3, you've got the county, the hospital, and EPCC as well.
And I know that it's regularly communicated through various channels that El Paso ISD is the largest taxing entity at 40%, and that is not the case.
So, yes. What we see from our partners is that EPISD is at 44% to 46%, depending on which entity puts it out there. We're actually seeing an NT right now sharing this information as they go through their public engagement. What this takes in consideration is the laws the legislature passes, it only targets school districts. And so when you look at the constitutional amendment that increased the homestead exemption from 4,200,000, that's just two school districts. And so when you take in all those considerations, that's what drops EPISD from the 44% that we regularly would get down to the 26%, 26%. And so that's the difference. So if it's taking into consideration all the impacts that we see as a school district that the other ones may not recognize.
And I would also note that the laws that apply to school districts in terms of restrictions do not apply to any of the other taxing entities.
So I gave you the definition or the description of the revenue that is generated through the federal. We'll move on to our fund balance, and I think that's a very important topic as we're living in the days that we are with low, less funding from the state and support, and how districts are having to manage their operations. And so obviously, fund balance is in essence the district's savings or reserves after the year is finalized, and it's in essence, revenue over expenditures at closing of a fiscal year. And so obviously, it helps us in our management of our operations, demonstrates when we're looking at bond ratings, because as we go, as we do any refinancing of our bonds or go out to sell bonds, we have to go through a credit rating process with Moody's and Fitch, and all those different things require us to ensure that we're fiscally, we're representing a fiscally strong entity. And so when we have a strong fund balance, that helps our cause in that, just like if you were gonna go purchase a home, your credit is very important. And so it also insulates us from any revenue loss or unplanned expenditures that we have. So it is recommended by the GFOA in the state of Texas, they always recommend that we have at least 60 days of fund balance, and this is unreserved unrestricted fund balance. And currently, the district closed fiscal year '23 with 88 days, and our current projection that we gave to the board last month shows us finalizing this current year with approximately 88 days. And so we start doing a lot of forecasting to make sure that we don't need to take swift actions in other areas.
And I would also note that there is a provision in my superintendent's evaluation that when I present a budget to the board, you know, I need to maintain a certain, a minimum number of days of fund balance. I think that's at 75 or 76 days of fund balance. So that's also a safeguard for us as well, because I work very hard with Ms. Aguirre, because it's part of how I'm evaluated as a superintendent.
And I'll share with you that the, when we refer to them as days, it's about $1.5 million per day, and that's how we measure that. This is a historical graph of our fund balance over the last couple of years. Obviously, the yellow graph or bar is total fund balance, and then you see the gray that is what we refer to as unassigned or unrestricted, and that is what we're measuring in days, correct? And then the blue, dark blue is assigned, and when we refer to assign, it's requires, requirements either from specific programs, so for example, our food service program, our state allotments, if we don't spend, let's say our bilingual allotment, if we don't spend the bilingual allotment to its entirety or at the 55% that we're required to in one fiscal year, we have to carry over those dollars to the next year to ensure that we spend them. A three-year average of meeting that spend mark could result in a finding from our external audit, at the annual audit. So those are the kinds of reserves that we have there. So this is a graphic of our expenditures for our current year. And so you can see here that 85.6% of our budget is related to personnel costs. And that's not very different from what most organizations have as far as personnel costs. Anything over 85% would be concerning. And then you have a breakdown, our next largest investment would be in our contracted and professional services, and then supplies, and then operating. And then we move on to the next slide, you can see this is, per every dollar that we infuse into our district, this is how we allocate our expenditures. So 63 cents of every dollar goes directly to instruction, being in the classroom and or the library services that we provide. When you look at the 14 cents that are titled Facility Security and Data Processing, they're just that, investments into the different areas. And 12 cents is to student support. 12 cents is related to all our extracurricular activities, our athletics, our fine arts, our counseling services, our food and nutrition, our transportation, so all the additional supports that we provide our students as we look at their operation, day-to-day transactions. So, you know, when you look at it, 75 cents of every dollar are really geared toward student impact of some sort. And then campus administration is 7 cents of every dollar, and 4 cents of every dollar goes to central administration. So that's the staffing and the operations of central office.
And might I add that we're well below what the state, you know, the state recommends that central office not be more than 6% of the ratio, and we're well below that at 4%, something like that.
So at our next workshop next week, I'll be sharing an update on our administrative cost.
Because a lot of times you'll get the first feedback that comes back from people about eliminating costs is, well, y'all are top-heavy, and it's like, well, actually we're not. So, you know, it's important, again, to educate people and to help them understand that to run an organization this large, you do need an infrastructure that supports the larger organization.
So this next slide gives you a summary of the compensation that has been allocated to our employees over the last couple of years. So if you remember, we shared a slide that said we've lost over $81 million in revenue. So about in the same time span of five years, we've lost about 40 million, yet we've infused all these allocations year over year, and every year they carry, they compound to the amount. It's not like we stopped paying the 20.4 that we gave in 2022, 23. It's that plus the 14 that we gave in current year, and so on and so forth.
And as we prep for this, this May 7 budget meeting, what we traditionally hear, and you're gonna hear it now, usually you get sworn in in June because the election's in May, and so you're lucky enough that you could at least have a board meeting before or a budget meeting before the budget, is our compensation. EPISD is not the highest-paying one. Ms. Ivedra did come in and offered, I think it was two years ago if I'm mistaken, it was a tiered structure, but the highest was a 7% increase for teachers, and then last year we did a 2% across the board, which is the second highest in the region. So there's a lot of work that we have to do, but this board has been very diligent and cautious, knowing how the state functions. Ms. Aguirre provides great advice, to where we try to balance what our expectation is with ADA loss, with the enrollment loss, with the state, you know, funding, with what we can provide for our employees. So you'll hear a lot of that in a week. In many cases, you'll hear it from members of the community, you'll hear it from teachers through email, I mean, you'll hear it through a myriad of avenues and mechanisms, but it's one of the toughest things I think this board and districts across the state are having to deal with right now, is that ballooning personnel costs, especially with the support of ESAR funding, and then with ESAR going away, how do you compensate?
Well, and what I will share is the, you know, as I've gone to faculty meetings across the school district, by the end of the year, I will have visited 60% of the faculties, and then I'll start up again in the fall to hit the rest of them. But I have been very intentional to share with teachers the health of our finances as a school district, but I've also been very forthcoming with them to share that my ultimate goal is to make sure that we do not adversely impact their take-home pay, so that if we're not able to provide them with an increase in compensation, that, you know, we're working really hard to make sure that insurance premiums remain consistent and that they can rely on their take-home pay not being, so we're not gonna hike up insurance costs, you know, because I said, you know, I can give you a raise, but if I give you a raise and then have to turn around and increase your insurance premiums, then your take-home pay is impacted, because you may, you know, leave taking home less than what you were the year before. And so we try to really work and balance those pieces. So I've been really open and forthcoming with teachers about the likelihood of us being able to increase compensation, you know, significantly.
Just to give you an idea, 2% increases $9 million to our district. So, you know, every percentage that we give up is significant, it really is.
And the last thing I'll say here, because I'm gonna say it every chance I can, we're not laying off any employees this year, we're not considering pay decreases this year, and we are not looking at significant hikes in our healthcare costs. So back to Ms. Ivedra's point about trying to make sure that that take home doesn't decrease, we've been working very diligently, and I'm very proud to say that we can say that to the community and hopefully put some of those fears to rest.
And that's all I have for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. How are you on time? Good? Any questions? Just one.
Okay.
Sorry. Going back to the challenges slide, just question on sustainability, what's into that umbrella?
And we kinda touched it on it a little bit. So through the pandemic, one example is through the pandemic, the federal government allocated ESAR funding was 190 million to our district. And so like, we took advantage of it, and we did compensate some of our teachers with those dollars, because it was an offset of our local. We gave one-time pay stipend payouts, and then we implemented programs. So as we implemented programs, and now as ESAR is leaving, we need to ensure that we can transfer in and absorb all those expenses into our local budget. So as we continue moving forward, that sustainability was critical.
The same thing as why we don't tie compensation to our fund balance, because that sustainability doesn't exist. We can sustain it for maybe two or three years as that cost balloons, but over time, you're depleting your fund balance, so what are you gonna do at that point when you don't have that amount left or you're below that third 60-day threshold?
So as we evaluate any program that we implement and initiatives, you know, that we need to ensure that, you know, what is that, we try to forecast, what are the expenses so that we can ensure that we can sustain them as we move forward? And you'll see that as I present compensation proposals to the board, I also give you a three-year forecast of what that raise will, how it will impact the district in future budgets.
I would also share with you all that it's critically important for you all to know that we also have external funding sources. You know, I've been, I've had experience in a number of different school districts, and I would have to say that El Paso ISD does, we get a lot of grant money. And so we have a great grants team, and we get a lot of money that helps us with some of the sustainability pieces. And so we qualify for a significant number of dollars, you know, in a number of different areas that really support where we're going and help us, you know, with that level of sustainability. So we have, you know, so aside from what the board adopts in terms of the budget, there's money on top of that from external funding that we acquire via grants through various different entities, so.
Are those mainly federal grants, or?
Well, some of them are state grants through TEA. I mean, I'll give you an example, our safety and security grant was about $33 million, and that came from the state of Texas. We've got some other grants that are in motion, school action fund grants that are also from the state, Texas Education Agency. But, you know, in some cases, like because we work very closely with Fort Bliss and we educate a number of families that come from the military, we get a lot of support from the Department of Defense through DODA grants. A great example of that is that Bliss Elementary is a school that's on military property, and so we're gonna receive federal funding to, you know, rebuild that campus. And so 80% of what it's gonna cost to rebuild that campus will come from the from the federal government, and will match the other twenty percent. So that's a great example of sustainability for us, you know?
And then just one other question. What does debt servicing look like?
Our our debt service? So, you know, I don't have, our current payment is fifty-four million dollars, but I can give you a summary of, I don't have
No, no, no worries.
But yeah, that's that's what it'd be. So it's the payment of all our bonds
Okay.
over the last couple of years, and usually our bonds are sold in about twenty-year or thirty-year financing plans of sorts. And so what we do, our financial advisors work closely with us, and when there is opportunity to refinance them, so to speak, for lower interest rates, that generates savings to our debt service overall, in a nutshell.
So I do have a question, just to make clear to 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 our trustees here. You know, when we look at all of the school districts, where do we fall in terms of where our tax rate is in comparison to others?
I think we're fourth or fifth on the line, Isleta being the highest, Socorro next, and then I think Canotillo and Torneo, or Clint or Torneo.
No, it's it's a, I think it's, yeah, you're right. It's Isleta, Socorro, Canotillo, Clint, and then El Paso ISD.
So regardless of size of district, we're still managing our debt at a good level. And we still have, so the rule is, when you go out for bond, you your tax rate or your proposal forecast tax rate should be no more than a dollar fifty. And we are at a dollar thirty-one. And so we have capacity to grow. In some cases, some districts can even go to that.
They're at a dollar forty-nine, a dollar forty-six.
So I have it here. It's Isleta, Socorro, Canotillo, Torneo, Clint, then El Paso.
There you go. So I can forward to you all the different budget workshops, documents we've done over the last two, so that you can have that review.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
This will take us to curriculum and instruction.
We're staying on track. All right.
Good morning. Welcome, Dr. Lovridge, Mr. Ivali, Ms. Beals, Ms. Ivedra. I'm Dr. Marta Carmona, and I proudly serve as the Deputy Superintendent overseeing academics, school leadership, and technology. With me here today is Dr. Gonzalez, the Chief Chief of Schools, and Mr. Al Garcia, who is our Chief Academic Officer and looking present on their department.
So what you're going to hear, just so I can set the stage, is, you know, this is, when we think about a school district and in comparison to, let's just say, the Hershey's Corporation. So the Hershey's Corporation is known for, what, making chocolate, right? And so school districts, you know, the the meat and potatoes of who we are and what we do, and the services that we deliver on, although you've heard about strategic planning, and you've heard about budget, and you've heard about policy, this right here is the heart of who we are and what we do. And that is teaching and learning, instruction, and what, you know, happens in the classroom on behalf of our students. So, Mr. Garcia, take it away.
Good morning, President Ivali, Ms. Beals, Dr. Lovridge, Al Garcia, Chief Academic Officer. So I did have an opportunity to reflect on my last board presentation where you were present. And so I'm going to kind of walk you through our organizational chart, just because there's so many academic programs and the meat and potatoes, as Ms. Ivedra mentioned. Whenever there's a program or an adoption of materials or instructional materials that need to be purchased through the board, I'd like to for you to know where it sits and and how our department sort of procures those things. So again, under me, I have four executive directors. Guy Rosales, who's in charge of teaching and learning, Tyra Harrison, who's in charge of the whole child learnings, learner support intervention. Veronica Reyes is in charge of the specialized learning services, and then Jason Long, who's in charge of college and career readiness and innovation. So looking at the Mr. Long's purview, I just want to pull out some very, you know, forty-five thousand view of what his department is in charge of. So his department is in charge of advanced academics. His in charge, his department's also in charge of launching or relaunching, codifying and implementing our GT program across the school district for the next school year, which we've done a lot of investment and time in terms of research about what's best, how do we restart that program, and how do we launch it off the ground? Very proud to say that, and effective this school year, we will, coming forward, will have a very, very clear picture of what gifted and talented students across our district should be receiving. Also under his purview is all the PTEC, all the early college high schools, the IB international baccalaureate classes and campuses, the dual-credit AP and honors courses. Also under his purview, very proud to say that we are launching our first about six schools in Algebra for All for our school district. Very excited about that. There's six schools that we have begun to initiate the process of having Algebra for All as an option for every eighth grader, with the hopes and dreams that eventually we'll be able to iterate to all our campuses and middle school. It's a gatekeeping course and a gateway for STEM, and we really are excited about that. Also under his purview is textbook adoption. Most recently, we brought to the board the adoption of our science materials for K-12. Also, under his purview is college and career readiness, part of our district accountability system, career and technical education, and also the planetariums in and his charge. So, small but important piece. Next, we have Veronica Reyes. She is in charge of, as you heard last board meeting, special education. What's important to note in special education is it is a work in progress. We are looking at restructuring that department, looking at RFPs to have an outside architect come and provide us some feedback. From my perspective, in the last four months that I've been supervising this program, we are looking at realigning, repurposing, and identifying the roles and responsibilities to ensure that our results-driven accountability measure, which I presented at the board last month, we make some significant progress in achieving those goals. Also under her purview, another huge, important program is our dual-language program. Again, over the course of the last year, a lot of work has been done to realign that program, to lift and support the program that's currently in place, and to begin to transition to a ninety-ten model from the fifty-fifty that we currently have, so that students are provided the opportunity to ensure a success, both with initial language support for our emergent bilingual students and those that are willing to venture into a dual language and learn a second language or a third language for their for their homes. Again, both programs under redesign. Under her purview is also early childhood, which includes our Montessori and the Montessori expansion program of that. I will say that they work in tandem with teaching and learning, which I'll talk about in a second, to ensure that their support for both our special education students and our emergent bilingual students. Next, we have Guy Rosales, who's in charge of teaching and learning, all things teaching and learning, I should say. I feel like sometimes the lion's share of the work lives under his purview, but it is important work, and you'll hear more about it specifically as it applies to the school board and policies. But just a high overview, anything with teaching and learning that works at the classroom level, at district level, his department is in charge of summer school programming. His department was in charge instrumental in launching our trend walks initiative, which I'm proud to say that by the end of May, we will have probably well over two thousand classroom walkthroughs in EPISD, where a multidisciplinary group of folks come to the table, visit schools, and look at fidelity of implementation of both the adopted materials, special programs such as dual-language, SELs, PBIS, and other other programs such as technology and and all of the the specific data that we gather tells a picture over time about the school. We do have follow-up and follow-through measures with those trend walks, but that was a huge lift. Another huge lift for this department that is under Mr. Rosales's purview is the adoption and support, curricular support for the high-quality instructional materials, new reading program, new math program, new science program, new social studies program. And then lastly, the shift from balanced literacy, which is a huge framework that was here for a very long time, to a structured literacy program that is supported by research and reading academies. One more purview item that he has under him is the instructional technology department and the librarians that he they oversee, to ensure that those opportunities are being provided to all those students.
So I I would like to, at this point, really share or shed light on on something that Mr. Garcia shared. In our school district, early literacy and just literacy in general is a critical, critical and important to us. You know, I think reading is one of the foundational skills that, as a organization of teaching and learning, is our primary responsibility. Because when kids can read at proficient levels by the time that they leave first grade, then we set them up for success. So prior to Mr. Garcia coming on, we spent, previous to this school year, we spent a whole semester developing what we call a literacy framework to really guide the work that we do in the area of literacy. It's been my focus as a superintendent to 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 help people understand that literacy doesn't start at third grade simply because that's when the state starts measuring, you know, how well kids can read on a high-stakes test, that literacy starts as soon as students walk in the door and we start to deliver services, you know, to them in terms of instruction, you know, a formal instructional environment. So we're making a lot of, we're taking a lot of steps to really focus on early literacy. We've increased the number of offerings. I mean, we, when I got here, we only offered half-day, three-three-year-old pre-K programs. We've, we are now at full day at a number of our campuses because we know it's that important. We monitor our pre-K through circle data so that we can look at numeracy and literacy development, and we've instituted MAPS programming because just as principals can cite their STAR data to me for third, fourth, and fifth grade, I want principals to be able to share with me, if I come and visit them, you know, how many kindergarteners, at the end of their kindergarten year, left kindergarten reading at a proficient level? Do you know that data as well as, you know, how kids are performing on a high-stakes assessment? So we are focused quite a bit on the literacy and numeracy development, but specifically, you know, in my mind, our goal is to make sure that we have high percentages of students, you know, in the ninety percents, because ninety-five percent can be attained, for our students to be reading on grade level when they leave first grade.
And then one more slide that didn't, I guess, I apologize, and make it onto yours, is we have Ms. Tyra Harrison, Executive Director of Whole Language Support and Intervention. Under her purview, we have positive behavior support intervention and social and emotional learning. We have a director there. We have a director for PE and health under her purview, the whole school district's counseling program, and lastly, the nursing department that's in charge of the well-being of students and schools. Again, her, the bulk of her work this next coming year is going to be to lift and provide a very robust response to intervention team on each campus, and which is a school-based intervention team. Yes, but they call it this, but it's a new word. I like response to intervention because it's so clear. But that bulk of that work will address a lot of the concerns about why students are being referred to special education, and we want to ensure that everything, as I said at the school board meeting, is being done for these students to ensure that that before we refer a child to special education, we provide an intervention after intervention, while the parents look at the social and emotional aspect, as well as the academic issues that are ongoing in tandem and collaboration with our principals and our parents and our teachers. Okay, so aligning academics, how do we provide support? As a school board, there are things that are definitely within your purview in terms of what is your role related to instruction? So if we look at student learning, curriculum, instruction, and assessment are a triad, and these all really align with the board initiatives, and how we measure those is important, as evaluated by Superintendent Ivedra's evaluation. Research tells us that the the most significant factor that impacts student achievement is that teachers commit to implementing a guaranteed and viable curriculum that is essential to teach our core content. How do, what is curriculum, and what is our guarantee? So we need to ensure that it's a standards-based curriculum with practice and the ability for students to achieve proficiency, that we guide all our educators to by producing these curriculum documents that we identify what is essential for teaching and learning, and that every student has access to rigorous academic experiences. And lastly, at the structure and organization, and those considerations are 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 enhanced to, are created so that we enhance and facilitate instruction for all teachers and students. So guaranteed curriculum means that it it provides all students equal opportunity for rigorous instruction. Viable means that we dedicate adequate time for students to learn and for teachers to teach that content at a very deep level.
And so, you know, Dr. Lovridge, you asked about equity. And so when we think about curriculum as it relates to equity, it's really about access. Have we written a curriculum that allows all students to access that curriculum? And that means that students need to have access to on-grade-level material. Regardless of where they're functioning, the access to on-grade-level material is critical and important. And I think that when we think about teaching and learning, that's where our teachers struggle the most, because in a classroom, you could have, in a third-grade classroom, you could have a number of different reading proficiency levels. However, we guarantee that our curriculum is set up such that we are allowing students to, or we're we're set up to, for all students to access third-grade curriculum, regardless of where they're functioning. That may require scaffolding, that may require small group instruction, that may require supplemental resources to move a kid from where they are to where they need to be, but we guarantee that they have access to on-grade-level curriculum, if that makes sense. So that's a great example of equity and the equity that we're trying to reach, you know, as part of our curriculum rollout.
Absolutely. And the viable part is to ensure that we differentiate between what needs to know and what is nice to know and what absolutely is essential to know. How do we support instruction? Lots of ways. We have lots of curriculum documents that we've been in the process of writing, and curriculum writing is a process. I shared with Ms. Ivedra yesterday, we're on, we are on Curriculum 2.0, which is, my hope is by the end of May, we'll be poised and ready to begin to finish writing our first nine weeks, or revising, visiting our first nine weeks of CNI, and then have the other departments chime in and fill the holes where they are and the gaps where they need to be. So we do have grade-level clarification. What is it that kids need to know at every grade level, every content? We do provide campuses and through our curriculum documents, a year at a glance, which creates the opportunity and space for planning about units and bundles so that kids understand that the curriculum is written in a certain way and should be taught a certain way. And then lastly, unit guides. Again, this provides clarification to all staff involved to ensure that they know what is essential to know in this unit, what vocabulary is important to know, how are we going to measure it, and so on. So what's underpinning all of these things is our assessments, and I'll talk a little bit more about assessments. Just for clarification, formative assessments are Friday night football games, Super Bowl, playoffs, is summative assessments. So for our, in our perspective, that analogy, our formative assessments are our unit tests, our teacher-created tests, our end-of-chapter tests, and then summative is our STAR tests or the end-of-year map assessment, which are aligned to the instructional targets.
And so real simple to break it down when you think about the written, the taught, and the tested curriculum. You know, if you think about it in terms of framing You know, if you think about it in terms of framing four questions. You know, what do we want the kids to know is all about the written curriculum. How are we going to know when students have learned it? That's all about assessment practices and how we gather data about, you know, students' progress and their learning. And then what do we do when they, when we find that there may be gaps? What do we do when we find that they've already, you know, that they're much farther ahead than where we're starting with the curriculum? That is the response. That's the intervention piece. So what do we do about that? So really, those three questions kind of guide the work that we do in teaching and learning.
So what have we completed to date? For sure, we've completed the year to glance. It's sequenced by bundles and unit. We have a very robust scope and sequence, unit guides, and curriculum-based assessments. We also have just-in-time videos that help teachers to understand what's coming for the nine weeks, like how can I process this, what things are important for me to know to teach and for my kids to understand. What is in progress is our currently occurring conversations. This is an opportunity for teachers, classroom-level teachers, to come and understand what's going to be happening in this unit ahead of time. We, a campus selects a representative from their campus and their grade level. They go, they preview the unit, they get a little bit of PD, and then understand the takeaways. That guaranteed viable curriculum is what we go back to. And then they go back and share at their campuses, things that we discussed that were important. We are currently recruiting the twenty-four, twenty-five cadre members, which is a stipend position approved by the board, where teachers actually come and help us write some of these curriculum documents, help us prove some of these assessments, help us to understand what's appropriate and how do we digest these chunks of learning at the campus level. As I said, what's in the process and the works, the revisions and edits of current curriculum documents. We did adopt a new science adoption. We rolled out a science supplemental material last year called STEM Scopes. Our teachers voted for a different adoption. So now we're going to be writing curriculum assessments and all the supporting pieces to lift that curriculum K-12. We're also developing unit guides and updates, subbridge activities, with SCL activities and performance tasks. And then lastly, curriculum calendars. Something that we did to launch our trend walks was when you have a multi-disciplinary team that comes to the table to visit a campus, for example, I might have a special education facilitator. Their area of expertise may not be math or reading. So what our curriculum department did is create a week at a glance. What should we be seeing when we walk into classrooms during this week? So, you know, I had used that in a previous life. Principals found that to be the most important tool. And there was a lot of clamoring, hey, where can we get these documents? And we would say, well, we just created them for this walk and they really want. And what I would share with them is I use this tool when I would do walkthroughs for teachers. I would ensure that I would be able to understand what was going to happen that week. And so I could actually have a different lens because I'm not an expert in every content. But given the week at a glance, I'm able to see what should be happening at every grade level, at every campus. So I know I'm going to move on.
One other thing that I would just add is that, because I think it's critically important for you all as board members to hear this, because many times you're going to hear from teachers. That, and so some of the revisions and the updates and the refinements that we're currently, that are currently underway with this department are as a direct result of the feedback that we're getting from teachers. So their voice is being heard and we are, so what I want to dispel is that they're changing the curriculum, it's going to be all new. That's not the case because I know that that's been a rumor that's been circulated. It's about refining the curriculum because it's always a work in progress. Those refinements are coming as a result of, again, the feedback that we've gotten from teachers in terms of this first-year rollout, what have they struggled with? What are the things that they'd like to see? Are there particular standards that need to be spiraled more readily because kids seem to be having more challenges with those rather than others, you know? And so those refinements are what the curriculum department is working on. But again, it's based on feedback that we're getting directly from teachers.
I'm going to zip through all of this because we have a short time crunch here. So what are some supports? Again, we have curriculum connections, implementation teams. The tier-three schools that struggled, all you have been supported with continual support in PD and curriculum internalization, specialized support, and continuous learning. Here are the tiered levels of support, coaching and feedback, teacher learning teams, job-admitted learning, and then looking at instructional practices and implementing the high-quality instructional materials. This is our implementation wheel and our core instructional practices. Standards-based curriculum, explicit instruction, flexible grouping, differentiated instruction, which is going to be a big lift for us next year as part of our superintendent's evaluation and ensuring that that's happening through trend walks, active student engagement, and behavior and SCL practices. It's flexible grouping, starting with whole group, small group, and then individualized instruction. I'm zipping through this, but know that I'll be glad to answer questions at the end. Assessment balance, ensuring that we have the opportunity to have district assessments, formative classroom-level assessments, and end-of-year summative assessments. There are some policy implications. Policy EH governs curriculum design, recognizes the need and value of ongoing cycle of curriculum review and development, and the administration to design a curriculum management plan and to ensure quality control with the alignment of the written, taught, and tested curriculum. Policy EA talks about instructional goals and objectives that the board sets to ensure that we have expectations regarding the managed curriculum led by leadership. And then policy EG, articulating the board's recognition of the need and value for a systemic, ongoing program of curriculum review and development. And that is well underway. Quick glance at our balanced literacy framework. These are the different screeners and the different audiences or grade levels that participate in them. Some of them are universal screeners, some of them address specific groups and small groups of kids. And then underpinning this is social and emotional learning, safe supportive learning environments, and clear access to additional support personnel such as interventionists. Policy UK, testing programs. This policy articulates the board's assessment philosophy in terms of requiring the district to implement a balanced assessment program that I just shared on previous slides. Okay, I'm going to zip through that and turn it over to Dr. Gonzalez.
So while they're setting up, I think that we're transitioning to, so this is the kind of instructional framework, how we operate in terms of all things instruction. And so as Dr. Gonzalez steps up to the podium, she is the chief of schools. So what does that look like as we support principals to implement these things on the campus? And so she, her team, really supports the implementation of what Mr. Garcia just described in terms of instruction and the direction that we're going in all of the systems associated to support classroom instruction.
Dr. G, you have up to five minutes. You don't have to use all five if you don't want.
One of my superpowers is talking super fast. So here we go. School leadership, as mentioned, I'm the chief of schools. Best job in the world, although they think they have the best one, we have the most fun. We have a really unique, new formation in our school leadership that was brought by Ms. Saivedra. And it gives our leaders an opportunity to have that progression from a campus principal to central office leadership and then above. And that, as you can see, we have an assistant superintendent for secondary, but we also have what are called executive principals. And our executive principals are critical. They are principal supervisors who are very new, fresh off the campuses, high performers. They understand the job. They also understand the importance of leadership. And you will hear many times as Ms. Saivedra talks and we all speak about our leadership and building leadership, leadership matters. And we're very blessed to be part of the Holesworth program, year one of five. And so this is about building our leadership and our pipeline for our future leaders. Mark Paz is the assistant superintendent for secondary schools. He is a principal supervisor of a number of campuses. Mr. Minago, Joseph Minago, secondary schools also, predominantly high schools. Saravinaigis helps serve mostly our middle schools and then our specialty schools. Just so that you'll be aware, we not only have pre-K eight campuses, one that is a traditional MacArthur we've had for decades and generations, but we have a number of new ones. So we have campuses that have three-year-olds to thirteen-year-olds. We have specialty campuses, Young Women's Academy, six through twelve grade for our young ladies. Amazing, amazing place. We have alternative campuses. We have three of those that are run by one leader. We have the Career and Technology Education Center. We have just a variety of specialty campuses, including a standalone early college and then PTEx, which are pathways to technology, early college high schools on all of our high school campuses, and Burgess has an early college as well. On our elementary side of the team, we have Michelle Casillas, who's new. She's joining us. We stole her from professional learning and teacher talent development. She is a seasoned veteran principal of one of our elementary, one of our largest elementaries in our district. She's joined us recently and we're thrilled to have her. Our executive principal team here in the elementaries, we have Ms. Aguilera, who was a principal of ours before moving on to this role. Michelle Romero and Dana Boyd, we both were very fortunate to bring them over from a neighboring school district. You can see, they're pretty much assigned by feeder pattern. They're working with the elementaries and pre-K eights within, for example, with Lilly, Bowie, Chapin, El Paso High. But then she's also working with our new Montessori campuses. And she have Murfree pre-K eight, which is part of the Coronado. So even though we have a little bit of a different design on the secondary, on the elementary, we try to stay with by feeder pattern but are always looking ways to improve the support to our principals and our assistant principals. Our mission statement is there for you to see. We really are about coaching and providing leadership. We are right-hand, right-side with our academics teammates, but also the technology department there, Dr. Kimono, also oversees. We're the trifecta of making the magic happen on our campuses. And we're also the operations side. And you're going to learn a little bit about operations at the global, but we support our principals in running their tiny little cities. These are the levers that we support through school leadership. And I know that that's been provided for you. But those are a lot of what we focus on as school leadership and that we can reinforce that our principals are focusing on as well. And then I want to just leave you with this thought. If you want learners to follow directions, you only need to provide the what. If you want them to lead others and give directions, they must have the why. And so we like to think of ourselves as the why. That was super fast. Was I under five minutes? Okay, all right. I did my work.
And just to close, the three departments, as Dr. Gonzalez described as the trifecta. One of the things that we recognized is that these departments were working in isolation. And so one of the things that we've done since this year is begin to work together. We meet weekly to align all our efforts, support each other's work, but everything in alignment to our blueprint. So every Tuesday, we meet and we, again, get all our work aligned to our blueprint. Thank you. Any questions?
You guys are doing a great job. I'm very, very impressed and very excited to see all the new things coming up. Thank you for your work, your hard work.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're going to take another five-minute break and then come back at eleven forty-seven. Okay, we are going to come back at eleven fifty. Mr. Sheffield and team, y'all have twenty-five minutes. So we'll convene at twelve fifteen.
Good morning, Board President Arabali.
Not reconvene, we'll conclude.
Okay. Dr. Leverage, welcome. Messiah Vedra, I'm Vin Sheffield. I'm the Deputy Superintendent for Administration. I oversee Human Resources, Parent and Student, Student and Parent Services, Athletics and Fine Arts. I'll let these fine leaders introduce themselves to you and give you some insight into their respective departments.
Good morning, Dr. Leverage, welcome. Good morning, Messiah Vedra, I'm Stori Bali, and Ms. Veal. Patty Cortez, and I'm the Chief Human Capital Management Officer. And I'm going to give you just a quick review of our department. I know you've gone through a lot of information, and we have a few more presenters. But first, I want to tell you that I'm really proud to represent El Paso Independent School District through the Human Resources Department. We have a team that really puts a lot of effort in ensuring that we're providing the best supports for our employees. If you see on, let me just pull up this. So this, this presentation here gives you an idea of the functions that we support through Human Resources. So we have our recruiting and retention area, our compensation, employee benefits and wellness, and employee relations and support. And primarily, what I really want to emphasize is that work that, that Human Resources does, does really require that there is strategic, thoughtful planning and collaboration with other departments. And that's essentially the way we approach the work that we do to ensure that we're providing that support for our campuses. And we have four HR directors that lead our hiring and recruiting function and our compensation functions. And we also have an executive director that leads the team that supervises the compensation area of Human Resources. And we have our benefits and wellness that's led by also our Director of Employee Benefits, Mr. Juan Chavez. And we have Rosa Ramos, she's our Executive Director for Employee Relations. And she, she essentially covers all the areas that have to do with personnel support, which is the area that as a board member, you will, you will definitely participate of some of those areas when it comes to employee proceedings for grievances, personnel proceedings such as terminations or non-renewals. But, but I will tell you that we do take a lot of pride in ensuring that we have systems in place and supports for employees to have open dialogue regarding any type of conflict resolution or even growth opportunities before anything comes to the board for any type of action. And as has been mentioned earlier, we are the largest civilian employer in the city. And with that record of at least almost eight thousand employees, we have a minimum number of proceedings that actually come to the board or that, that even go through litigation proceedings. And that is because there's a lot of collective effort amongst departments, amongst Messiah Vedra, to ensure that we're providing training for employees and that there's open communication to resolve issues at the lowest level. And that's an area that as a board member, I think is going to be key that, that you see that with the amount of employees that we see, or I'm sorry, that we employ, you really will not have too many proceedings that go to the Level Three at the, at the board level. And I wanted to mention in terms of our employee support that we have an extensive amount of employee wellness benefits that we provide to employees for opportunities to ensure that they are making themselves a priority in terms of wellness. So we do offer what we have, we call our Healthy Living Campaign, where employees have the opportunities to engage in different types of support, of activities that are at no cost. You may have seen, we've been promoting things such as hiking, pottery classes, art classes, a variety of avenues that employees can select to, to ensure that they're providing time for, for individual wellness.
And what I would just add to, to this is that, you know, we, I, I know that Dr. Gonzalez mentioned the fact that, you know, we have a partnership with Holesworth, which is a nonprofit entity that really supports education and the development of leadership. Because their mission is that leadership matters. If we invest in leadership, then ultimately we get the student outcomes that we want. And so the first year of our work has really been associated with building and developing a leadership definition. And a big part of that leadership definition that's aligned to our mission in terms of thriving is nurturing wellness. And so as we begin to develop leaders and we focus on the culture that we want to create in El Paso ISD, nurturing wellness is critical and important because we know that it's not only about compensation, it's not only about benefits, it's about what, what is the environment like that you work with? And do you have opportunities to engage in the importance of self-care? And, and I, I think I heard this weekend at a conference that I was at, it's not about work-life balance, it's about work-life harmony. And so that's really where we are and, and what we want to be able to nurture as a, as a school system for our employees and with our employees.
Thank you, Ms. Vedra, for that. And I think to that point, really, our aim when we talk about being strategic is ensuring that we're providing opportunities for our employees to be the best that they can be in their, in any capacity that they hold and viewing each one of them as a leader. Because we, through our Holesworth opportunity, we're really emphasizing that ultimately for better outcomes for our students, we have to ensure that our leaders, our leadership has met their highest potential. And that's really the work that I think any, any HR-related function is going to be led by that, that goal in mind. And another benefit that we provide through our employee benefits area is the Employee Health Clinic. And again, that provides a cost savings for not just the employees, but also for our self-funded health plan. That's at no cost to the employee, and it provides for basic care to be available to our employees without any out-of-pocket costs for the employees and their covered dependents. The clinic is also available to employees who are not part of the plan, but as an employee, they, they can also participate and have coverage provided through the clinic. And employee relations, I, I again wanted to emphasize the mission here because really, when, when you talk about employee relations, it maybe sometimes has a negative connotation. But really, what truly is, it's, it's a support for employees and support for our leaders to ensure that there's opportunity for growth and there's opportunity for training. And, and that, so the team works really diligently to ensure that there is a balance between providing that growth opportunity and also providing training for not just our employees, but anyone in a supervisory role. And so I mention that because that's truly what we ensure is that there is a balance between providing that support for both avenues. And I'll end with the potential Board of Trustees proceedings that, that you may be a part of in your new role. And that is employee grievances at, at what is considered Level Three that are heard by the board. But as I mentioned earlier, a lot of effort is put into our Level One and Level Two of the grievance proceeding to really attempt to resolve conflict and to give an employee the opportunity. Because that, it really is the intent of the grievance process is that the employee has an opportunity to be heard and that the supervisor is able to engage and try to resolve issues at the lowest level. Employment termination proceedings, I mean, there is a level of, of coaching and support that we ensure that is in place for every employee before anything leads to termination. But at times when that is the, the case, then those are proceedings that would go before the board. And Equal Employment Opportunity Commission charges, those are, again, external proceedings that come to you for, for decision-making that could include settlement offers as part of that proceeding. So that was a quick interview, I'm sorry, introduction to Human Resources. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to.
Just one quick question regarding the health clinic. Do you have an idea of the numbers that that attends to? How many employees use the health clinic?
I do not have it with me.
No problem. I'll follow up with you.
I, I can provide an extra.
It's of interest.
Have an update for you at the next board workshop, so we can have that number.
Perfect. No, it's excellent stuff, and thank you so much for giving me the full picture.
Thank you.
And while they pull up the next presentation, I will tell you, with Human Resources, this board has made a concerted effort to recognizing that though we may not be able to do a massive compensation increase, there are things that we can do program-wise to support our employees. So we have passed parental leave policy. I think we're the only school district in the area to have one. Is that correct, Ms. Cortez? Yes. That, that was passed, I want to say, two years ago or a year ago. And then last year, we passed, in addition to our catastrophic leave balance, we have another one that lets employees donate leave that they have pulled to employees that may suffer a, a family medical crisis or something of that nature. So they're very diligent, and then I'm excited to see the two new clinics. So I did not know that, so that's really awesome. So I was a city employee. The city employee had a partnership with Providence. And this was what they did, is they had clinics for throughout the city that you could go to at no cost. And it was a great value to us because you don't pay anything. So every, every cycle I'd get sick, I'd just get a B-12 shot, and it would be all free. So this is an amazing program.
That covers like nine out of ten cases, too.
Absolutely.
Excellent, thank you.
So I guess we're jumping to communications. Yes. So if you want to skip facilities, we'll go to communications.
Good afternoon. My name is Liza Rodriguez. I am the Chief Communication Officer. Dr. Leverage, we've, we've worked together during your press release and announcing. Ms. Veal's Superintendent Vedra, Board President Arabali. I lead the Communication Department for the district. And in August 2022, we launched our new tagline of "It Starts With Us During Convocation." And since then, everything that we promote, everything that we share, everything that we write along with our strategic blueprint, I try to connect how it starts with us, and everything that we do starts with our employees, with our students, with our staff, and with the board. I'm in charge of press releases, I'm in charge of the website, or my department is, social media. We've been working hard these, this last year and a half to improve our relationship with the media. That's a work in progress, and it's improving, but there's still a lot of work to do. Working with employees to advocate and be agents of the district. Everyone to understand that they're part and they're important to communicate all the great things that is happening in our district. We did, we do large events, convocation. We have two ribbon-cutting events coming up, May ninth and May fourteenth, for Hartley and for Coronado. We also do, we did our, while I was here, our first State of the District in October, which was a great success, sharing with the community the great things that are happening, sold out every table. And now get several emails asking when our next event is because they want to be a part of it. So we continue to share the great things that are happening here. And I, I, I hear from a lot of staff now that people are feeling it. I think someone yesterday in Cabinet shared that they, I think Maribel, shared that someone at a campus told her, hey, we see and we hear all the good things that this district is doing. So our messaging is working, and, and we're just continuing to, to share.
Well, one of the things that I will share with you, and this is just a testimonial, it's no, no hard data. But what I would share is that as we work very diligently to change the narrative of our school district, you know, when I very first came to El Paso ISD and we posted critical leadership positions, the applicant pool was not very deep. It was, you know, I think that there were people that were tentative to consider an opportunity in El Paso ISD. I would say that during prime hiring season a year ago, we saw a significant increase in the depth of our applicant pools. And a lot of times when I'm interviewing leaders and applicants that are thinking about coming to El Paso ISD, especially if they're external applicants, I ask them the question, why El Paso ISD and why now? And many of the responses that we receive when we hear candidates that are wanting to come is that, you know, I follow you on social media. I'm, you know, there's just an energy that seems to be, you know, part of El Paso ISD. I've gone into your website, and I've looked at your strategic blueprint. There's exciting things that you all are doing, and I want to be part of that work. And so, again, testimonials, but it's just, you know, a signal and an indicator that although, you know, many times we feel like we're not successful or we haven't gotten there to, to the point where we're changing the narrative, there is a lot of energy that we've created around who we are, where we're going, and really delivering on the promise of a brighter future for our children and our families.
This will take us back to facilities? Perfect.
Mr. President, Madam Superintendent, Ms. Trill, Ms. Veal, Madam Secretary. Dr. Leverage, welcome again to the district. My name is Stacy Pearson. I am the Chief Operations Officer. I like to deem, or I, short way, easy way of thinking about it is all things non-instructional, most things non-instructional pretty much falls under our purview. We're going to, we've got about five minutes, so I'm going to try to do this in four minutes and give you one minute to be able to answer questions. And so first thing we want to, it didn't switch, I guess, it's not supposed to. But okay, it's our organizational chart. We're in the process of reorgan. I've been here since November. I think this is about month number six for me. And so we're in the process of making sure that we have school every day, as well as getting our team in the right seats on the bus so that we can deliver a quality service to the school district. Just some of the, of course, the strategic levers, but the ones that we put most emphasis on in the Operations Department is a lever three, becoming a destination district, a culture of accountability and equity by design. This mission is adopted from, there was a current, a previous mission, and so we are working on revamping our mission statement. But basically, our, our mission is to create a optimal customer service of what I like to call the customer experience for all of our students and our stakeholders in the community that visit our campuses. Our divisions, Operations Division, we employ about a little under eleven hundred, eleven hundred total employees across all of our departments. And of course, that's, a district's population is about eight thousand employees. One of our divisions is Custodial Services. In the twenty thousand square foot of the elevator speech of customers, Custodial Services is that we have about ten thousand square, ten million square feet in our district. We have about a little under four hundred or so custodial employees in that department that manage about twenty thousand square feet per custodian, per eight-hour shift. And so, of course, that, that's their regular duties. They also responsible for any extracurricular or outside duties that we have, events that we have inside of the district. These are just some examples of that. Of course, we have seventy-five student-occupied campuses. There's about eight other facilities. And again, I'm, I'm going to roll through this, so just stop me whenever you have questions. Their budget is about one point two million dollars to maintain all of the facilities. Next is our Facilities and Construction Department. This department is primarily responsible for capital improvement as well as any construction projects or renovation projects that we have. Our direct, Executive Director is vacant. This, again, this is a part of our reorg. So this, there will be some changes as it relates to this, the leadership in this department, as well as our Operations Department. But we do have four project managers currently and one vacancy. Facilities overview, basically to give you the, the elevator speech on this, is they're responsible for all new construction. So BON 2016, we're proud to announce that we're coming to the end of BON 2016. June the eighth is our expected substantial completion of all BON projects. There will be a resolution period of about sixty days after June the eighth. So we, we're happy to say that when we start school in August, all of our BON 2016 projects will be complete. We also operate ESSR projects currently that we're expecting substantial completion, and those will be around the end of June. So we're excited about that. One project that we are working on right now, we're in the planning phase, that's not in this presentation, is our Bliss Rebuild Program, Project, and I know you've heard about that. And so we're in the planning phases of that now, and we're excited about. about that, and so, we're in the planning phases of that now, and we're excited about what's gonna happen with that. One of the highlights of the Facilities Department is they did complete a 2023 ACOM Facilities Report. That's kind of what our driving document, our NOSTAR, that we use to assess the conditions of our facilities, as well as, we use that to help us identify where we need to infuse our finances as it relates to maintaining our facilities as we make decisions moving And we've talked about that. Currently, one of the hot button issues for our Facilities Department is, we're about 75% HVAC across the district, which leaves us about 25%. At the end of our HVAC projects, we'll be about another 10% complete, which will take us to about 85%. And then, we're being very strategic as we consider trying to close the gap on the other HVAC campuses. But our priorities are to make sure that all student academic areas are HVAC air-conditioned. And then, these are just some of the project managers of some of the projects that they're going through. You have that in your packet. These are some photos for some of our bond projects, we're excited about the work that we've done. We've had some hiccups as it relates to that, but the finished product has been very good. We're excited about that. Maintenance and grounds, our maintenance and grounds, again, our guys are responsible for, now, we have 75 student-occupied campuses and eight other facilities, so our maintenance and grounds are responsible for all 83 of our facilities. We have basically four regional directors who oversee all maintenance and grounds per region, our districts divided up into four quadrants. Mr. Ortiz is the leader of that department. Maintenance overview, basically, we have about a $16 million budget to support all of our campuses. Along with that $16 million budget, we have a current $4 million Facilities Improvement Budget, along with some bond gap opportunities to help improve that as well, improve our conditions as well. Some of the maintenance highlights is, you know, and I missed this in the custodial part as well, we're working on going green in our Custodial Department, which means that we're moving away from some of our non, going to a more non-intrusive consumable products to where it's more safe for our air quality, as well as safer for our environment. And we're working on the same thing in our Maintenance Department, we're working on our Energy Conservation Plan, and making sure that we're making good use of taxpayers' dollars and saving money to be able to put monies back into the academic programs, obviously, for student outcomes. Operational Support Services, this is one of the departments that we're actually revamping, we're consolidating that along with our Destination District redesign and some of our budget constraints that we have coming forward. This is an area that we're looking at some reorganization opportunities, and that position is vacant at the time. Print shop, we're excited about our print shop, Mr. Victor Carrillo does a good job. The thing that we're extremely excited about in our print shop is it is a 100% self-funded operation. So, all of our printing needs in the area for the district, as well as other, we support our area partners, our regional partners, other school districts, these guys have a current fund balance of about 370-something thousand dollars, 370-something odd thousand dollars, and that's all generated within that department. And so, this department receives zero dollars from the school district to maintain salaries or supplies or anything like that. They're totally self-funded, so we're excited about the work that he's doing over there. Transportation Services, this is a big one for us. Our Transportation Services, we currently have a fleet of 235 or so buses. We're excited that all of our buses meet the 2025 Initiative. We are 100% propane fleet. We also just received a grant to purchase another 10 propane buses. We have an average bus replacement plan every year of about eight buses, and I say buses, but that's all of our white fleet holistically. Currently, we have about 400 or so employees over there in that department. All of our buses do have monitors for, to help with safety. And again, like I said, we're 100% propane district, so we are meeting the EPA regulations for 2025. We're ahead of schedule as it relates to that. We're also looking at piloting, moving our white fleet toward electric vehicles, so that we can, that would be our first attempt to go green in our Transportation Department. And so, as we consider vehicle replacement, as we move forward, we're looking at taking the small step of moving our white fleet first toward electric, and then we'll consider our buses as we get to that replacement scheduled point later in the future. And this is just an overview of our Transportation Department and their staff. Currently, we're operating at about $14 million budget on that to transport about 6,700 students. We do recognize the inefficiencies in that, and so, we are working on revamping that Transportation Department. We also are working on creating a proposed revised policy to be less intrusive to our students that want to be transported to support school of choice. And so, we're working on that plan right now to present to you guys hopefully in the fall. It will be more inclusive of the students and less intrusive of those that are choosing school choice.
I think that's another example of what we know may come out in an audit, from the Equity Audit, is that although we have choice, and probably more choice than most school districts across the state of Texas, the access to that choice may be prohibitive if transportation is an issue. And so, relaxing our transportation policy is something that Mr. Pearson is working on to bring a proposal to the board, so that we can adjust our policy and make transportation more available, so that the choice options are more accessible to students.
And then, the last portion that we have is our grounds, and so, you know, we have about 65 grounds guys that cover all of our grounds in the district, that's all 82 or 83 facilities, and so, we have to be very strategic as we approach our plan for grounds. So, I think my time is far spent, chief has kicked me enough over here already. So, we'll try to answer a few questions for you if you have any, if not, we'll give way to my colleagues.
Just a quick question, you have an internal commercial driver's license program, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Oh, excellent. And then, second question was, what does the, I think it was, I can't remember the acronym for the Evaluation System of the Structures of the Buildings?
ACOM.
Yes, there we go. What's that look like, and does that vary from different type of structure, different type of structure, or is that just a uniform system of evaluation for the whole?
So, ACOM was an outside contractor that we brought in to do an assessment of all of our campuses and facilities, and so, ACOM had a formula that they've identified, and we'll share that information with you obviously at a future date. But the ACOM formula, it identifies the critical needs of our campuses, it identifies those that are in great condition as it relates to electrical, plumbing, MEP is how we call it in our world, as well as HVAC, as well as technology upgrades, safety. It gives a whole gamut of identifying what our schools look like, excuse me. And then, it also tells us where we're deficient and where we can infuse money. It gives us a rating from fair or critical to good on our facilities, and it helps us to understand, you know, where we need to infuse monies to expand the life of our buildings. I hope I answered your question.
Absolutely, yes. Thank you so much, Mr. Pearson.
They were also instrumental in helping us develop our educational specifications for each level of campus, like our elementary, our pre-K through eight, our middle schools and our high schools, because when we did our last bond in 2016, there were no educational specifications that we could find, and that's critical and important as we think about, what should every elementary in El Paso ISD have as part of its facility? So, that was a critical step forward as we think about any future bonds.
As well as it informs our Destination District redesign, a lot of the conversation that you'll be seeing over these next cycle of what, 10 meetings, AECOM's report plays a role in that, so it's something that I would highly recommend when you get to review at AECOM.
Good afternoon, Board President Arubali, Dr. Lovridge, Ms. Beals, and Ms. Ayvedra, Manuel Chavira, I'm Chief of Police Services. You have the presentation in your notebook, so I'm gonna cut to the chase. We basically operate Police Services under policy CKEA that authorizes the board, that allows the board to authorize the superintendent to hire a police chief and police department. We have a police force of Texas Peace Officer certified, basic peace officer certified officers in the state of Texas, under code criminal procedure 212, so we're Texas officers. Also, I always do that, but the thing is, we run 44 officers, 30 on duty during the day. That means we have an officer at every middle school and every high school, and they patrol the feeder patterns. We have three that work in the evening and three that work at the graveyard shift. If you do the, if we do the math with a five-day work week, that means two are on duty in the evenings and two are on duty in the graveyard shift, and then we have five supervisory positions. We do have a memorandum of understanding with the City of El Paso Police Department and the Sheriff's Department, so, the Sheriff's Office, so that we could hire their off-duty officers to work at our elementary school campuses, where they just work at the campus if anything comes up, where they need transport or need assistance, our patrol officers from the middle school or high school will go there as well. We do have several rules and regulations that we abide by, of course, Texas Penal Code, and we also help enforce the board policies. We have nine licensed telecommunications. We run a 24/7 dispatch office that answers 911 calls. Also, we monitor, we are our own ADT, so all the, all the district alarms, burglar alarms, fire alarms, they come into our dispatch centers, we do run that. We have two clerical positions, and one Safe and Secure Schools Manager that works with our Office of Emergency Management with the city, and we integrate a lot of our law enforcement partnerships in that regard. I won't go through the rest of it, I know, Mr. Arubali, we're on a time crunch, so if you have any questions in regard to Police Services, I'd be happy to answer them now.
I will share with you that Chief Chavira works very closely with Mr. Pearson and our Technology Assistant Superintendent Manny Verdusco. The three of them are working together. I mentioned that we have a $33 million safety grant, and really, the safety, the way we're using that money is really in three areas. Number one is really infrastructure, because with our bond, we were able to put, I would say, a lot of safety bells and whistles on our campus in terms of door entries and all of that, but we found that they weren't functioning regularly, and that was due to a lack of infrastructure. So, a big part of that grant money will go to really expand our infrastructure, so that all of that works on a consistent basis. That's, you know, our technology, you know, our entry, you know, in and out of campuses from any, you know, entry points, cameras, things of that nature. The second thing is really about education, like what, when we think about safety, there's a lot of, people go directly to hardening buildings as being a guarantee, but the hardening of the buildings is less of a guarantee than the human behavior. What do we do every day, and how vigilant are we in terms of being aware that how we operate and how we walk about the buildings from day to day are critical and important? If it's important for us to keep all exterior doors locked, then if you're walking in, make sure that you turn around and you close the door behind you, so that you are securely closing the door and avoiding entry from an external party, right? So, working on education, and then thirdly, is the human capital, and that is, you know, working to hire additional police officers over time, so that within five years, we have police officers stationed at every, at every campus. So, in a nutshell, that's where some of the initial money is going as we think about improving and enhancing our safety and security measures.
Correct. What's a typical profile of your average officer? Are they former EP police or retired army?
We do have quite a, about, I'd say a third of our officers are retired El Paso PD or other law enforcement agencies. They do come to us from other law enforcement agencies, but since I've come in, and it's a nationwide problem trying to get officers to do this vocation anymore, so I'm recruiting them right out of the academy. And so, we have a very robust field training officer, an FTO program, that we coordinate with El Paso PD, so we do hire them right out of the academy.
Good. Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Mr. Sheffield, do you have any closing? Nope. Okay. If there's nothing else, then we will adjourn the meeting at 12:23. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, chief.
Yes, thank you.